You're on record.
We are on record, okay. The meeting of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills Planning Board from Monday, March 4th, 2024 at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it's being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6, EDSEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nor would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Barbario.
Here.
Mr. D.
Here.
Mr. D. Piero.
Here.
Councilman McQuah.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Stanziel.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We also have our board planner, Ms. Winter, our board engineer, Mr. Canziano, and our board attorney, Ms. Steinle.
If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is open to the general public. Is there anyone in the attendance who wishes to speak to the board about something that is not on our agenda tonight? All right. Hearing and seeing none. We'll move right into the agenda, which is application number 23:531, SK3 Century Associates LLC, 3th Century Drive, Block 202, Lot 1.7. We've got preliminary and final major site plan with C variances for construction of a warehouse and related site improvements. I hear you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Wonderful to have the new microphones. For the record, John Ingestino, partner with the firm of Ingestino Taylor, located here in Precipiny. We represent the applicant, SK3 Century Associates, in connection with this application. We're seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval for a new state-of-the-art warehouse facility of approximately 64,800 square feet, and approximately 4,800 square feet of that space will be office space on a piece of property that is approximately five acres and identified as Lot 1.07 and Block 202 on the tax map of Precipiny Troy Hills, also known as 3rd Century Drive. Currently, there's a vacant office building on the property. This project will redevelop and transform this site into a productive use. Property is owned, research, office, and laboratory, and is in the OVL-8 overlay zone district. The applicant is proposing to abolish the existing building, construct a proposed warehouse facility, and is also proposing other modifications and improvements to the site, which you'll hear about this evening. The applicant is requesting some C variances, which we believe are minor in nature, and they will be outlined to the board by the applicant's engineer and planner. We have one waiver, which we think is technical in nature, and that is from the requirement that the applicant submits separate sheets for final major and preliminary site plans, and we note that in the planner's report, they didn't have any objection with that. We have some review memos here, just so the record is complete. We have the GPI review memo dated February 2nd of 2024. We have the ARH last iteration comment letter dated 2/28/24. We have District 6 fire letter dated October 23 of 2023. We have a letter from the Sore Utility dated October 25 of 2023. We have a Morris County Planning Board report dated February 6 of 2024, and we have the Highlands exemption determination from Ms. Winters. We have four witnesses this evening, Mr. Chairman. We're hoping we can get through it. We think we can. Noah Crismer, who's the Director of Land for KRE Group, will be witness number one. We have Ronald Kennedy of Gladstone Design, Inc. He's the civil engineer, so he'll outline all things sort of outside the building to discuss the things that civil engineers typically discuss: drainage, site circulation, parking and the like. We have Connor Hughes of Dynamic, who is the traffic engineer. Although this is a permitted use, we do have a traffic engineer anyway. We have Don Kim from KSS Architects, who is the project architect. And lastly, Mr. Kennedy is going to wear two hats tonight. He's our civil engineer, but he's also going to do the planning testimony with respect to the variances. So without any further ado, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call Mr. Crismer, again, who's Director of Land for KRE Group. Thought it would be helpful for him to familiarize you with KRE and with the project generally.
Do we do have one waiver to talk about?
Yes.
The waivers for the separate sheets for final major and preliminary site plan. We have no objections to that.
Okay. Have to get the board's approval. Yeah, I figured.
Dominic, not here yet.
Do I have a motion approving, allowing, as our planner has presented to us, the one waiver with regard to the separate sheets?
Motion, Math.
Do I have a second?
Second, Gary.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I should note that the zone was changed in this area a little over a year or so ago, so it is permitted use. Having said that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Crismer, so he's ready to be sworn.
If you please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. And could you please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record?
Sure. Noah Crismer, last name, C-H-R-I-S-M-E-R, and KRE Group's located at 515 Marin Boulevard, Jersey City, 07302.
Okay. And could you provide the board with some background on your qualifications and licensure?
Sure. Well, I'm not going to testify as an expert.
He's not here as an expert.
Oh, not an expert.
No, no. Mr. Crismer is here as a representative of the owner to kind of give you a little background about KRE, and we think some just background information with regards to the project, which of course will be supplemented by more technical testimony by the professionals. So he's there in that, he's here in that capacity.
All right. Great.
Thanks, John.
I think that was a question to you, Mr. Crismer.
Yes. Go ahead. So anyway, so let me introduce myself first. But Mayor Barbario, Chairman Dinsmore, thank you, guys. Thank you to all the professionals that worked on the application and to the board for hearing us tonight. I'm Noah Crismer. I'm the Director of Land at KRE Group. KRE Group is an affiliate of the owner of the property here and has been the owner of the property for some years now. I do all of our planning and entitlement work across the state and in Pennsylvania as well. And so we'd like to start our hearings just a little bit of background on us. KRE Group is a family-owned, sort of intergenerational company. It's now in its third generation. The company started off with like a single-family homebuilding business back in the 50s and 60s, then did office development and bought offices, including these, in the 70s, 80s, and 90s, and has largely over the past 15 to 20 years been doing a combination of residential development and some industrial and warehouse development as well. Company owns about 15,000 apartment units right now and close now to 7 million square feet of office and industrial space. Importantly, KRE Group is vertically integrated. We do everything from what I do on the very front end all the way through property management. So there's always a direct, full-time KRE employee to call on our job. From the time I start doing this to the time that Tom Goff takes over, we self-perform our construction with our own construction group, to the time that our property managers take over, and they do all of the property management with full-time KRE employees. We've done a couple recent projects like this where assets that we had that really had outlived their useful life and where the market wasn't there for them anymore, we've converted, and we've done a couple. I chose just two that were recent and that were conversions to smaller-scale warehouses, this being smaller than those two. So in Florham Park, just a handful of months ago, we got an approval to take down a defunct office building there. It used to be like a data recovery center for one of the banks out in New York City, but they stopped needing those anymore, and so it had been vacant for a while and was being reassessed. And we worked with Mayor Taylor there, Mark Taylor, to come up with a plan with some of similar aspects is what we hope you guys will see tonight, and that is that while the office building was being replaced with a warehouse building, it was done with a real focus on the design and making sure that the commercial corridor there along Freeland, which in Florham Park is a pretty vibrant commercial corridor, maintained its identity, that this didn't junk up that Freeland, which was important to the mayor and the town. We hope we've done the same thing here. Year or two before that, in Woodland Park, working with then-Mayor Kazmark, we also did something similar to that. There was like an industrial and almost they tested warheads and stuff at this, and jet engines at a facility there on McBride, also a main corridor through Woodland Park. And Mayor Kazmark was concerned, they wanted to do a residential thing there, but the flood plane wouldn't allow it. And so we did a warehouse there, 200,000 square feet, and we worked with the mayor on getting that done. And again, emphasis on like making sure that this looks nice from the street, making sure it operates nicely, making sure that it doesn't, that it keeps the character of the corridor while turning it into a productive asset, something that's going to be on the tax rolls, something that's going to be pulled, that's going to have bodies there, that's going to create jobs. And so that's what we're looking to do here as well. A little background on these properties, they were built in the 70s. This property is a three-story office building, got about 250 parking spaces. The property had two tenants, both under the same umbrella group. They were Emergency Medical Association and EMX. Both did outsourcing in emergency rooms. I wasn't really aware of this until we started talking about this a couple of years ago, but apparently, emergency rooms outsource a lot of their staff, doctors, nurses, administrative staff, and these companies do that. They have not occupied the building in four years now, neither of them. One of them went bankrupt. We're not sure when the other one is going to be bankrupt. So, and the lease on the one that has not yet declared bankruptcy, whether they will or not, we don't know, expires shortly. They're never going to re-tenant these spaces. They've said so. They also are not in good financial standing. So the building has been vacant. If you've been by there recently, you may see a car in the parking lot. That's either somebody there doing security, or cleaning the building, or doing the landscaping, or picking up the mail. But you haven't had an employee in that building in about four years' time. So that's our problem. And as John said, we worked with the mayor and some of the faces that I recognize here on the dais to do an overlay zone for 3, 5, and 7th Century to allow there to be a broader use, still commercial, but one that would keep those properties vibrant, have employees in them, and keep them on the tax rolls. At the same time, taking some of the office space off of the books, because Precipiny, as no mystery to folks here, has struggled a little bit with its office vacancy. And so to take a property off of the office rolls but keep it active on the tax rolls seemed to be a desire of the township, and we worked with folks on that rezoning, which happened at the end of 2022. So we spent the last year-plus working on plans, sharing them with your offices, and here we are tonight with the project that I think we'd like to show you and walk through tonight. So I'm going to introduce the first exhibit, and was hoping I could just walk. Now you're like this. Okay. And was hoping I could walk the board through the first exhibit here. This is 3...
A1.
A1 Site Plan Rendering, dated March 4th, 2024. And can everybody see? I'm sorry, Ms. Smith, can you see it? Okay. So here's the plan for the overall site. We have a couple, there's a board I'm going to show next, which is a comparison of this plan and what's on there currently, what's at the site today, the existing condition. But thought we'd orient you first to the proposal. So as you can see here on the board, you have a plus or minus 65,000-square-foot warehouse here. You've got 11 loading bays, one of them being a ramp up for a truck, one of them likely also. We show a compactor out here, but oftentimes, the compactors are located in one of the bays as well and then kept contained with the dock as well. It's basically a square, the building, 240 by 270. We've divided, as you can see, we have a proposed office space here and a proposed office space here, both at the corner. When I get to the rendering, you'll see how it presents there and the glazing that's there. Our thinking is that the building essentially divides really nicely into two tenants, could divide nicely into four tenants. And the reason for that is that folks have probably read, real large warehouses right now are struggling. There was a boom in large warehouses, down near 8A, even down to Exit 6. Those are struggling, and there's a lot of supply. But there continues to be a real need around this area for local necessity-based warehouses. So this is the guy or gal who owns a sports equipment company and needs 10,000 square feet to store their products, to get them out to the marketplace locally. That type of user, plumbing supply company, et cetera, the normal folks who used to occupy warehouses before huge fulfillment centers took them over and turned them into something that, you know, a new economy, basically, in the last 10 years. This warehouse is more geared toward your traditional warehouse user. And I think it's important to point out what it is not. It's for a traditional warehouse user. It is not for a high-volume fulfillment center. One, it's not big enough. Two, it's not cross-docked, so you don't have trucks coming in one side, goods hitting the rack and going out the other side. That's not what this is for. This really is for your standard necessity warehouse user that's running a business and wants to get product out locally to the distributors in the local area. So got the building here, oriented, Century Drive here. In terms of parking, we've got 51 car parking spaces here, and our engineers will walk you through how those are laid out. We reuse a very little amount of the parking. We do have the accessible spaces and the EV spaces as required by code now. Like I said, 11 loading bays here for the docks, and then importantly, at the bottom of the plan, you'll see this hash mark here. This is a stabilized turf that could be used for emergency access. So if fire or life safety needed to get to the building, needed to get around this side because something was blocked here, we've got a stabilized turf here. It's basically a honeycomb. I've also just learned about this in the last handful of years, basically like a heavy-duty plastic honeycomb that grass grows through, but you can drive right over it. So it's impervious, soaks up the rain, but if a fire truck needed to drive over it, it's rated that it's stabilized and you could drive right over it with a fire truck. Our engineer can get into more technical with that, but importantly, you've got emergency access all the way around the building. So that's the overall site. Before I put up the next exhibit, you can see the stormwater here, which of course our engineer will get into. This complies with all the DEP regulations, or disturbance of over an acre, is a vast improvement over what's out there for stormwater today, and we'll get into that a little bit.
Certainly we can do that so that the public can see it.
Certainly. So. This is A1. Here's the plan. Before I throw the next exhibit up, are there any questions on the basic layout, basic idea here? So here's our next exhibit, John.
This would be A2. Can you describe that?
Yes.
So this is A2, and...
Sorry, guys. These are brand new. All right. Still working. This is titled Comparison Exhibit, also dated March 4th, 2024. We've got four comparisons that we thought were important. The first one is impervious coverage. This is the existing building. It's 64,000 square feet of office space. It's almost the same size floorplate-wise, not floorplate-wise, same size gross floor area as is the warehouse, but clearly, the warehouse is one story, is one story, and so has a larger footprint. But what's important is everything outlined in blue here is impervious, and we increased the impervious coverage on this site just more than 1%. So just over 1% increase in impervious. At the same time, as we'll get to, we're adding a lot more trees here and some serious stormwater infrastructure. So we think we've basically kept the impervious coverage almost exactly where it's at on the site today, very slight increase, but adding significant stormwater controls and greening the site with the addition of another 70 trees, a net benefit of over 30 trees to the site. So that's the first comparison that we have here pointed out. The second comparison is the greening of the site with the landscape plan that we have here in the stormwater. So you've got 48 trees on the site right now. When we're done, 79 trees, so a net increase of 31. We'll keep seven of the existing trees, 72 new trees, including both significant buffer plantings in response to our neighbors on both sides of the property, but also shade and decorative trees out front as well as behind the property. The third comparison here is the proposed driveway access. So we think important to note, we're basically reusing the two driveways, the two driveway entrances. So they've already proved to be safe, they're already set up well for the site, they work well for the warehouse use. We are reconstructing them a little bit and widening them because particularly the northern access, which is the primary truck access to the site, we've widened that throat a little bit, which our engineer will get into, but essentially, we're keeping the same basic traffic pattern to and from Century as exists today. And finally, we thought we'd look at the setback of the building. So the current setback here is 50 feet, and we are about just shy of 70 feet to the closest corner of the building and something more like 100-plus feet from the furthest corner. So we've increased the setback of the building a bit. In its place, a stormwater structure here and a number of decorative trees and plantings that you see out here. I have one more exhibit that I'd like to put up before I hand it over to our experts for their testimony, but if anybody has questions on this, and I can show this also to the public, these were the comparisons that we're talking about.
Noah, if you can show the...
Yep. Are you able to see it? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Great. Okay. So finally, this is a rendering, and John, this, I'm going to have to, I think, mark this with a pen.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the architect will come up too.
Okay. Cool. So this is A3. It is a rendering. It is not dated or titled, but it's a front rendering of the proposed warehouse building.
And that was prepared by the architect?
That was prepared by our architect, who will be providing testimony. Yes, ma'am. So this is what I was talking about at first, and we've learned quite a lot in the past couple of these that we've done about how important it is that the warehouse doesn't look like your standard big-box warehouse, because this is a redevelopment of an area in an already commercial corridor where you have a mix of uses, office buildings, you're going to have the LA Fitness, you're going to have... So this is already, while there's some vacancy here, it's already an active and vibrant commercial corridor. And so we don't want a plain vanilla building there. We want something that to the street shows almost like an office building, as close as we can get to an office building. So you'll notice, and our tech will walk you through this, you've got a lot of glazing, you have some interesting architectural features with paneling here, you've got a lot of light and air through windows on the building, and you'll see the two sides of the building. So these are the two areas proposed to be office spaces. They could be further divided, but they take up a pretty significant portion of the building, and we think it presents pretty nicely to the street here. These are actually cherry trees on the plan. We made sure that if we were going to show cherry trees, there was actually going to be cherry trees. So we do have these cherry trees out front. But this is the presentation to the street, and we're hoping that this presentation lines up as a little more contemporary than some of what you have out on Century, but a nice upgrade, we think, certainly to the current building that we're proposing to take down, certainly to 3rd Century right now. And so that's it. I think I've got through most of what I wanted to talk about and share with everybody here. Let's just see. We've got the trees, driveway access. Yeah, all set. So I can take any questions, or I can introduce our experts for their testimony.
Well, I'm going to ask if the board has any questions on this testimony at this time. Mr. Napolitano.
Thank you for that. Just, I don't see on plans here, but what sort of signage is going to tell people they can't go that way on that honeycomb and reinforced road there? Oh, good point. So we can, our expert could come up and talk about signage. We can also work with the board on if you want, you know, a chain link here, you want a Knox box. I can't remember exactly what we proposed, so I won't testify to it. Our engineer can, but we're happy to work with the engineer. We've done everything from signalized, you know, siren gates to a chain with a Knox box, anything like that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions by members of the board?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Math.
So you said right now you potentially can have this for up to four tenants?
Yeah, plus or minus. Yeah, we made the building so that it could subdivide like that.
Are they going to be linear, so they all have access to loading docks?
Yes, sir. They would all be linear, they'd all have access to a dock. Yep.
Any other members? Mr. Canziano, do you have any on this testimony?
Not on your testimony. Who's going to talk about hours of operation?
I can do that. Yeah. So the proposed hours of operation would be 24/7, and I think that's allowable in the zone. What we find with these smaller warehouse tenants is that while you say that, and while they will operate 24/7, the majority of the traffic in and out of the site is employees during the day, and trucks, which you will hear from our traffic expert, are few and far between, actually, to these sites. And that's not just with the ITE counts, it's actually backed up by post-construction surveys that our engineers have done. So post-24/7, we don't see this as a very high-volume facility. Again, going back to what this is not, this is not a high-volume fulfillment center. It's going to be lit up like a stadium at 2:00 in the morning with a bunch of trucks coming in and out, trying to get the deliveries out for the following morning.
Just to follow up on that, so just considering it's 64,000 or 65,000 square feet.
Yep.
Potentially, that's the largest and potentially smaller units. From your experience, do you find that these, this size or smaller tenants utilize the 24 hours, go through shifts?
They do sometimes, yeah, and they may want, I hate to say a skeleton crew, but yeah, they might want some employees in there at night. There could be a delivery or two coming at night. I mean, this is sort of a commercial area, but yeah, they want the flexibility. We're dealing with a potential tenant right now in Branchburg Township on a very similar-sized building that is looking for 24/7. They will readily admit that their overnight traffic and overnight usage of the facility is less, but they do need the option to keep it open. Yep.
Mr. Math?
One last question. The whole emergency access.
Yes.
With the honeycomb. I'm just curious, why do you need it? Is it to keep impervious down?
So absolutely, from our perspective, it's to keep impervious down. On an area...
Because you're well underneath the limit.
Yeah, but it's to keep impervious down. We think it's responsible. It does work, and that's why we do it. Yeah, rather than pave the whole thing. And it's really not a cost, it has nothing really to do with cost for us. We're relatively indifferent between doing this and paving it with blacktop. We just think environmentally, it's a little better for the site. That's why we do it.
I mean, there's one trade-off, which I'll get into with your site engineering.
Sure.
But that's, that, by having all the trucks come in the other direction, it forces them to do blindside backing into the bays.
So it's funny, and we talked a lot about how the drivers want to come in and back in, and we passed this through a number of different companies. All said that if you're coming in off of Century, you come around on the right, that you go past, and that their back-in movement was fine this way.
Okay.
Yeah. So they have a way that they like to back in, and we gut-checked this, because we could have done sort of either direction, right? We could have chosen the top or the bottom. We chose this because this was a favorable movement.
Yeah, because usually, if you're trying the other way, the driver can see everything, whereas he has blind spots, a lot of blind spots if he's backing the way you've got the site oriented.
I'll let our engineer get into that.
Yes. Okay.
Any other members of the board? Hearing and seeing none. Are there any members of the public who wish to ask questions of this witness of this testimony at this time? If you please come up and identify yourself and ask a question.
My name is Camille Pechet. I live on Murray Court, which is right behind Century, and you guys have been a neighbor of ours since I lived there 25 years, and a good neighbor. Yes, I have questions, and my neighbors have questions. They're not here tonight. Basically, we're concerned about the quality. Mayor, you remember, we came to the town council. You told us to come here and voice our concerns. So we have concerns about the quality of our little neighborhood on Murray Court. We have very small footage that bucks up to the Century Drive, where you guys own 3, 5, and 7. Almost right behind, I'm right behind 5, so I'm very close to 3. Our concern is that this is warehouse, and I understand all about overlay 8. Our concern is if this is warehouse, and I understand all about overlay eight, that the warehousing now that it's owned for, how can we be sure that we don't have noise pollution at ten o'clock, or twelve o'clock, or two o'clock, or four o'clock in the morning that would keep us awake and our children? And in my case, my grandbabies. So those are number-one concerns about the quality of us living in the neighborhood we've been in for over twenty years.
So I understood and appreciated. I will allow our engineer to cite the actual regulation, but sound is governed by the DEP. And we are not allowed to have noise pollution by state law. And then every township follows the DEP regulation on that. So we can, I can have our engineer cite that regulation, but in terms of sound, we will comply by all the laws of the state.
Are there refrigerators available or allowed to stay outside? Hard for people to enter the facility, the warehouse, for hours? And that's quite loud.
Yes, so I think that trucks are not allowed to idle. That's also part of the state law.
Are there refrigerated trucks?
And refrigerated trucks, they don't have their engines on while they're going, but they'll have a refrigeration unit going. But that's certainly a lot quieter than the engine, so it's not engine noise that you're hearing there.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sanziel.
So you alluding to that the building will have the capability for cold storage?
So we have not designed it for cold storage. We would not want to rule that out, though. Yeah.
That was my question.
All right. Any other members of the public have any questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Englishino.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to call Mr. Kennedy at this point, who is the project engineer.
Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy, would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And then please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Certainly. Ronald Kennedy K E N E D Y Gladstone Design, 265 Main Street in Gladstone, New Jersey.
All right. And could you provide the board with some background on your qualifications and license?
I'm a civil engineer and a professional planner, licensed in the state of New Jersey since the mid-1980s.
In both?
In both. I have testified before hundreds of boards throughout the state of New Jersey doing land development applications similar to this, residential, commercial, industrial types of applications. And all facets of the civil engineering design that we would typically get involved with with site engineering, myself and my firm have been involved.
So we requested the board accept Mr. Kennedy as an expert, both in the area of civil engineering and in professional planning.
Any questions on, Mr. Math?
Just one. If, so you're testifying as a planner later, so I'm just curious. When you obtained your planner license, did you do it through examination or through reciprocity?
Reciprocity, in the eighties, that was still allowed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. That was something that was cut off, I'd say, in the early nineties. But besides the aspect of the planning licensure, I've been practicing as a professional planner for many, many years. Testifying regularly as a professional planner, both in board adjustment applications for devariances as well as some things.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the qualifications? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I guess, Mr. Kennedy, if you could please walk the board through the civil engineering aspects of the application.
I can. I just wanna make sure I can effectively put the boards up here without having to turn around to the public, and I gotta clear a number of those. So we typically push it back in the corner, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, you could put it back there so that the members of the public can...
Board and the public can see.
Yes.
Thank you.
And maybe you want to take this one down so that it's not in the way.
And the next question, were those boards entered as exhibits? Were they labeled?
They were. You're on A4.
I'm in A4. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna label exhibit A4. It's called Neighborhood Aerial Exhibit, with today's date of March 4, 2024. And by way of introduction to the property and the neighborhood, Littleton Road is on the left-hand side of the sheet. North is straight up. Sylvan Way is across the bottom of the sheet generally. And then Century Drive is in the left-hand side of the area that's outlined of the property in question. As you can see with this exhibit, the surrounding uses around the property itself are all office buildings. And every one of them around there is an office building structure. Right now, some are vacant, others are not. The outline that is in purple that is on this exhibit, A4, is the area that was the overlay zone that was adopted by this board last year. And that's three lots, both three, five, and seven Century Drive. So those three lots were rezoned, or not rezoned, but put the overlay zone of the overlay eight zone onto the O R L zone. The property itself is known as Block 202, Lot 1.07. It's 5.01 acres. The, as Mr. Christman said, it was developed in the 1970s. It has a total of 68,000 square foot of office. Two-hundred-and-seventy surface parking spaces currently exist right now. The access to the property is both by two driveways that come in off of Century Drive. And I'm gonna show the next exhibit of the existing conditions. Mr. Chairman, while Mr. Kennedy's labeling that, I just want to make clear for the record, the applicant does not own five Century. I think there was a comment before, and that the applicant owns three and seven, does not own five.
Just gonna answer that question, thank you.
All right. A5 is the existing conditions map. And again, blowing in from the larger view down into the property itself, it shows the existing building, three-story building, total of 68,000 square foot. Shows the parking to the rear of 270 parking spaces, the driveway to the north side of the building and the property, and then the driveway to the south side of the building, and has circulation that goes around the building. Generally, the only stormwater management feature is a small basin that's located in the northeast corner of the property. And we're gonna show plans that are gonna change some of that. Developed pretty simple with a primarily rear-focused parking lot and the building relatively close to Century Drive. Existing coverage is 46.7% of the property right now. And as Mr. Christman testified, the building itself's been vacated for a number of years. Obviously, the benefits that we're proposing today is to reuse and repurpose the unutilized piece of land, enhance the streetscape along the roadway, new stormwater management, which is gonna be an integral part of this with these new standards for green infrastructure, which will enhance the water quality, the infiltration, attenuation, and peak rate of runoff on this property versus what occurs today. Based on the existing conditions, the change to the zoning and the intent, or KRE, the proposed exhibit, I'm gonna label A6, is Proposed Redevelopment Exhibit. Small R. Correct. So as was stated before, it's 5.10 acres. The building itself is a one-story building. It is a total of the 68,000 square foot of building area. It has and reuses the two existing driveways, one to the south and one to the north. The north driveway's widened from a 24-foot drive aisle to a 30-foot drive aisle to accommodate the larger vehicles for the vehicles to the rear of the property. A small parking lot in front of the building, as you can see. And then it was talked about already of an area that's a turf-managed area that's along the southern part of the building. And while the question came up why, the primary reason why is the Highlands exemption that we received for this property had to keep under a quarter acre of new impervious coverage. If we added this as a total loop, we'd be over the quarter acre, and we would not meet the Highlands exemption. So that's the primary driver of that. Obviously, from a cost standpoint, it's about, it's probably more expensive to put this turf in than it is to pave it, just in general terms, of doing that correctly. But the primary driver for this is the exemption under the Highlands for relief of a quarter acre of new impervious coverage for that. That would put us over if we had a full loop in there, and we'd require a different set of approvals before Highlands. The driveway that...
So basically, the Highlands considers this, those pavers, pervious?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. It's not considered new impervious coverage for them.
Okay.
The, again, the layout is fairly simple around the building. To the rear of the property is the loading docks themselves. As Mr. Christman said, there's a total of eleven of those. One that's all the way on the north side is a ramped driveway or a ramped loading dock where you can physically drive into the building. The other ten are drop-down loading, where it's 48 inches from the finished floor of the building down to where the wheels would go in. So it's a standard loading dock operation that you can back into those. But we do want to make on this one side, one area entrance that you can come in at grade where you can physically drive into the building with the vehicle. There is another area in the center here that shows for a future compactor that could be put on the site itself, not in the loading bay itself, where they could put those in the actual loading bays. We have pedestrian entrances into the rear of the building that the architect could go through. And the other aspect in the rear is that we have a small detention basin that's right up against the building itself. And I'm gonna go through some of those details that's causing some relief on an issue with the retaining wall and a fence on top of retaining wall. Front of the building is pretty standard for a parking lot. We have a aisle with parking on both sides in front of the building itself. The primary focus is to have an entrance at the corner of the building that would be for guests and employees in the northwest corner and in the southwest corner. You could see that on the architectural rendering that you saw before. And there'll be a total of four entrances physically into the building. The signage that's in the front corner of the property right now in the southern entrance, we're gonna basically put that in the same area. We have to set it back a little farther because your zoning requires a 20-foot setback. Now, we'll comply with that. And I'll have a small sign that will comply with all your standards. There is two signs actually on the building themselves over each of the entrances. The architect will show those in detail, but we will read some relief on those signs, and I'll go through that a little later when I talk about the barriers relief we need for some of these site improvements or building improvements. As I said before, like, I said it wrong. The existing building is 68,000. The proposed building, it's 60,000 square foot of warehouse and 4,800 square foot of office. So it's actually a total of 64,800 square foot. So 60,000 warehouse, 4,800. The building height itself will comply with the 45-foot requirement for building height. It's measured on average grade around the building. So the average grade with the front of the building being equal to the finished floor, the back of the building being four foot below the finished floor, when we do the average grade calculations, it's actually 2.7 foot below the finished floor is the average grade. When we add that, the 45-foot has to be measured to the 2.7 foot below the average grade around the building. Shown on the architectural plans, but we gotta make sure that we're coordinated so we don't have a problem with the building height issue. As far as the total number of parking spaces, by your ordinance, it's 0.8 space per thousand square foot of floor area that requires 52 parking spaces. We physically show 41 parking spaces on the property. Two of the spaces, by the state requirements, are EV parking spaces. They're not gonna be EV-ready. We're actually gonna build the EV charging stations right into those. And they count as double credit for those. So equivalent, we have 53 parking spaces where your ordinance requires 42, or 52 per the requirement. So we meet the requirement of having 51 physical spaces, but we get credit for two additional because of the EV parking spaces.
I'm sorry, can I interject for a second? Christine, is that right?
That's what I have.
0.8 per thousand?
For the overlay zone, that's what.
Because I thought we were talking like 1/2,500 for this, for the overlay at one point.
That's what we've generally done in the redevelopment plans, but this overlay zone is...
Is different. Okay. I mean, I like the number better. I'm just sort of clear from ITES.
Yeah, just using our few ordinance.
85%. But, you know, demand, but, okay, no, I'm just curious. Because it's the first time I've ever heard of 0.8 per thousand for warehouse.
The size of the spaces are nine by 18. We meet the accessibility requirements with the new accessibility code, so there's no issues with that. The number of parking spaces, again, we meet with the bonus of the two EV parking spaces that are there. And as I said, they're not gonna be EV-ready. We're actually gonna be putting those in at the time of construction. Your ordinance requires, allows for a one-loading dock door per 5,000 square foot. So in this, we would allow 13 loading docks. We're only showing 11, one of those, which is the loading ramp. So we meet that requirement that we're not over the number of loading dock spaces. The next item, which may become a variance, we'll talk about this in a second, but it's the design. We're still designing for what is WB67 vehicles. Okay, so that's the largest vehicles over the road in New Jersey that's allowed. So it would, the spaces themselves we're having are 60-foot deep, that's over the concrete area. And then we have an additional 75-foot pavement area for the turning, backing into the space, which is 135 foot from the face of the building. That's a standard design. That's what you see up at 8A, down on the Turnpike. That's the standard design for those. What we found out with the comment from your engineer is that the total length of the vehicle could actually be up to 76 feet. Okay, the total length of the vehicle. Your ordinance, and I say your general ordinance, not the one that's specific to the zone, but your general ordinance says you need two times the maximum length. So if we have two times the maximum length of those vehicles, that would be 152 feet where we have 135 feet. And again, we'll go through the justification of that later. We're using a standard design that we do for loading docks down at Exit 8A on the Turnpike and even other smaller projects that Noah talked about in KRE that we've designed with them of the 135 foot. And that's what we're showing on this plan. So it would be a 60-foot-deep concrete pad for the actual, the trailer itself. And then you'd have an asphalt area in front of that that would be 75 foot. And we feel that's more than adequate to make the turning movements in and out of that space.
Are trailers of that size expected at this location? I mean, based on the...
It could be. You just don't know. I mean, again, the, from what we're seeing, the world keeps changing with deliveries, and it keeps changing for those things. So what we're making sure we're doing is we know that the state allows WB67s in the state. So we're designing our systems to accommodate that. Will that physically occur here? It really depends on the tenancy that comes in there. It really does. I mean, the smaller tenants tend to not use vehicles that large. And if they do, it's very infrequent.
I would think they would use box trucks. That'd get a lot more than...
Yeah. And again, but they may get the delivery from, you know, their warehouse that they're getting from Ohio that may have that larger vehicle that comes in, and that only comes in once a month. It's not coming in every day. But that larger supply thing that comes in over the road, that they really can't control how it's being shipped. But their product out likely they can control. And usually, they'll have generally smaller vehicle because they're going local, they're not going national. But to get product to this property, to this building, you don't know what size vehicles could be coming in there, other than we're gonna design it to the maximum limit, just to be comfortable that the vehicle can get in and out. to be comfortable that the vehicle can get in and out of it.
Fair enough.
So we have the 135 foot that's there. We've widened out the driveway to 30 foot in width. And we think that's a normal circulation width when it has and expects tractor-trailer traffic. What we found out also, based on the comments from your township engineer, is that the maximum width in your ordinances for a driveway is 12 foot to a max 25, or 24 foot. So we, again, it may need another relief. We'll talk about that when I get to my planning testimony because we do have a 30-foot wide driveway. And under one of your standards, that in this design standard, it talks about a maximum width of a driveway of being 24 foot. And we're going to, if that's the case, then we're going to ask for relief. We think the 30 foot's more appropriate for this site with turning in and out and that movement. Waste management is typically handled inside the building for a facility like this, but we show a compactor outside as well. Again, tenant-driven, we're given that options available for either scenarios, that it could be inside the building or it could be in a compactor that would be outside the building as a standalone compactor or one that would be backed into the physical loading dock itself. Pedestrian access. Walkways that we have along the front of the building that we have for pedestrians that are in the general parking area. We do not have walkways that go around the building to the rear to the loading dock. We think they're two separate functions. Typically, they're not related to one another. The folks that work in the front will walk through the building to get to the back. It's not a circulation that they would walk around the building, so we're not showing that access. We also show, there's five parking spaces that we kept along the southern side of the driveway that does not have a sidewalk. Now, we added a sidewalk along there. There's some detailed comments in that, making that a little wider. It's only four foot wide now, but five foot. And so any of these parking spaces that are in front of the building for passenger vehicles would have a walkway to get into the building. Utilities, I'll get to another exhibit.
Exhibit A7.
Right, again, grading and utility exhibit, March 4, 2024. Fairly straightforward on the primary utilities, which is electric sewer water coming into the front of the building off of Century. We are wrapping around water line to the rear for hydrant for fire protection that would be to the rear. We show the fire department connection in the front corner, the northwest corner of the building for the fire department connection for the sprinkler system, a gas electric sewer. The biggest change that we're doing on this plan from a utility standpoint is the stormwater management. And again, under the new statutes that we're redeveloping the site or repurposing the site itself, we still have to meet that criteria. And overall, it gets a significant net benefit to the watershed because of what we have to do. And you could see on this site is we have a total of three, or should be four, new detention basins. A basin here, a smaller basin up top, a basin right behind the building, and then a basin in the front that all have to be designed to these new standards. The maximum drainage area going into each basin is two and a half acres. In the previous, they took all five acres and dumped it in the lowest corner of the property, put a hole in the ground and called it a detention basin. That was the version of 1970s. Believe it or not, and I've been doing it since 1970s, is we've come a long way in making it a little more sophisticated. So right now, we have to handle infiltration and because we are slightly increasing the amount of impervious coverage on the site, we have to provide infiltration for that increase in impervious coverage, which provides no infiltration today. The second thing is the whole site, any area that we're redeveloping, we have to meet the water quality standards. And in this case, we're doing that with small bioretention basins that are here. And in this case, they'll be relatively low in depth, even during a hundred-year storm, they'll only have two or three foot of water in them. But they'll have planted material that will be in there. There'll be an 18-inch section of this very specific planting bed material in there, underdrains, a sand layer underneath that 18 inches, and then a stone layer below that. So the sandwich of construction is to enhance the treatment of stormwater management that comes off the property. The other benefit of this site is that we have a very large roof area, which doesn't have the same potential for having pollutants as what is now focused on as vehicle parking surfaces. And we have less than half the vehicle parking surfaces on this site versus the existing site itself. And that means that that will have the propensity to have less pollutants there, even though we're having these four stormwater basins have the water quality standards where the total suspended solids have to equal 80%, as far as meet the criteria for 80% of removal of total suspended solids. So netting out the project is it has a big advancement enhancement from a stormwater standpoint because of these new improvements. All new surfaces, all surfaces that'll be on this will go through one of these basins before ultimately it's discharged into a pipe network that's to the rear of the building that discharges out to Southern Way. So I think that's a, it's a pretty big enhancement for what exists there today. John, A8? Okay, lighting, again, comparative to what's there today, you have fixtures that are on these globe bulbs that are out there now. They're about 18-inch diameter. They have no dark sky cutoffs at all on those. They appear to be on dusk to dawn. And what we're proposing here is 15 pole-mounted light fixtures and 11 building-mounted fixtures. They would all be downward-facing, all LED, and they would all be dark sky compliant where you're not going to have the spillage of lighting that certainly the fixtures out there today have.
In your opinion, Ron, does that produce a benefit to the neighbors behind the building?
It does. It, the fact is that they're all downward light as opposed to just glowing out right now. And, you know, that's the evolving that we have for light pollution, both from a neighborhood standpoint or an overall local community standpoint, is downward fixtures. You can control a lot more of the lighting patterns now with LEDs than you had with the incandescent light bulbs or that we can control. Overall, the lighting, we're at average of 0.9 foot candles. Went out there with the meter today, I'm sure it's brighter than that. Parking lot levels will be pretty low. Loading dock areas, we just even have an average of two-foot candles. So we're keeping the intensity low on that site. There's no reason to overlight it. And we have, again, the right types of fixtures that are here to get downward lighting. The next is, I'm going to go back to. Go back to exhibit A6, and I just didn't talk about landscaping. I think Mr. Christman talked about the fact that we're removing some of the existing trees that are around the buildings and around the parking lots now. And we're replacing that with new landscaping primarily focused around the perimeter of the development portion of the site. Some new landscaping that's in the front around the detention basins. Certainly to the north and to the south and to the east, we have new landscape plantings that are there. We're breaking it up with deciduous trees and we have a combination of evergreens along the two property line corners or property lines, the north and the south, and then more deciduous and ornamental trees to the front and rear on the property. And I'll have an overall theme to it. If you go out there today, it's kind of old, scraggly. Some of these things aren't in great shape. Some of them are decent. So this will have a new, fresh theme to the site plan when we plant this material. But for the most part, we're trying to get native materials as much as possible on these things. And in addition to that, we have, you know, shrubs, perennials, ground cover, and the typical site plan details that we would, we would want for a facility like this. And last is the zoning standpoint. The bulk standards for this property, we meet. And that's on the lot area, on the setbacks of the building, certainly on the density both from the building coverage, the lot coverage standpoint, we meet all those standards. There's a couple of technical ones based on some circumstances on the property that I want to go through and just touch upon for a minute. I'll come back about planning testimony, but I just want to identify those at this point in there. And then you're going to have other witnesses that are going to come along and talk about some of those details, but I want to identify those. The first one is the parking setback for the lot lines. The ordinance requires a 10-foot parking setback and there is five spaces. And I'm going to put this exhibit up. This will be a new exhibit.
That'll be A9.
Site plan variance exhibit. And there's five spaces that are in the southwest corner of the property. And those five spaces exist today. And by keeping the southern driveway, it's just these five spaces in the corner. They've been built when the project was originally built in the 70s. And they're six and a half foot from the property line where 10 foot is required. We're eliminating-
So just so we're clear on that, the construction of the new building is not creating those variances. Those are pre-existing because that's what's there today.
That's correct. And the main reason why I'm not getting rid of those is because I'm keeping the existing driveway that's on the southern side of the property. That's the main reason I'm keeping those five spaces to get up to our 51 spaces. We're eliminating 37 non-conforming spaces on the north side that are in that same six foot, six and a half foot. And we're eliminating 16 non-conforming spaces on the southern side. What we're asking to do is keep those five spaces that are up at this corner that are six and a half foot as opposed to 10 foot that's required. It abuts another area that has parking up against it. So it's another similar use in an office building next to it that does not meet that 10-foot requirement already. It has some screening that's along there with some shrub mass right now, but we're asking for the relief there. The next area that we have relief, and this will be my last exhibit, A8.
P10.
It's the slope disturbance exhibit. And in this case, the slope disturbance exists in some very minor areas that exists in along the northern property line, primarily around the existing detention basin. So even when you cut the side slopes of a basin in, you create slopes that are three to one or four to one slopes. And they would qualify under your ordinance as steep slopes. And then there's a small area on the southern side that would be a steep slope that would be about 15%. These are constructed or made during the actual construction in the 1970s. It's not something that exists naturally. It's not something that goes beyond that. It's a natural steep slope. But physically, they were to construct primarily the detention basin. And we're going to ask for relief on those. We're reconstructing those areas and we're going to be making new steep slopes based on the side slopes of those detention basins as well. The next area, I'll go back to, relief that we need is exhibit A9, which was the site plan variance. In that area, we have two areas that we have retaining walls. They're small. One is four foot high, one is a maximum of 4.1 foot. The 4.1 foot exists on this detention basin that's off the southeast corner of the building. And it's 4.1 foot at the worst-case scenario. On top of that, because of fall protection, we're putting a fence up. It's an aluminum open fence that would be tubular aluminum type of fence that was there that you can't fit a four-inch sphere through, but it's a very open environment. According to your ordinance, it's the combination of the four foot, the height of the wall plus the fence. So it actually behaves as an eight-foot structure. And the maximum allowed is a six-foot structure. So by default, we need relief on that. So it's at that one location here. And the second location is where we have the ramp going up into the building itself. At the highest point, it's a four-foot loading dock. So at the highest point, that retaining wall would be four foot. We're going to put a fence on top of that, again, for fall protection. So that would be an eight-foot structure according to your ordinance. Max allowed is six foot without tiering it. We can't tier this to make it comply. So we're asking for relief based on the circumstance of a four-foot wall in case 4.1 foot wall plus a four-foot fairly open fence. It's not stockade. You can see right through it. It'll blend itself into the landscape, but we still need relief by your definition. And then you're going to see with the architect, and I'll just go over it to set the tone up for it. We have two building-mounted signs, one at each corner of the building that's on top of the architectural feature of the entrance. The ordinance allows for only one because we have two prominent features of the site. We're asking for two. The second part of it is each sign itself or a sign on the building could be up to 150 square foot. We're only asking for each of those to be 93, but the ordinance requires that you have to add both of those up. So if I add both of those up, we're 186 and the ordinance allows for 150 square foot. Okay, so you'll see that with the architect. I'll come back as a planner and testify. I just want to set the tone for that, is that we're building smaller signs, but two of them. If we got too small, it'd be hard to read, so we're asking for relief. We'll be under, each of those will be under certainly the 150 square foot. We're only at 60%, but the combined is 168. And then the last two, I kind of touched on already, is this, the loading, the berth size, the loading space, the 135 foot versus the WB67. That's likely relief and I want the board professionals to weigh in and see if they agree or not. And then the width of the driveway under section 430, 275H, as far as what I read based on the comments from your engineer review letter, 12 foot to no more than 24 foot. And that northern driveway's 30-foot wide, so it looks like we need relief on that to make that work. But all the other components of the bulk standards, the primary bulk standards, we meet. There's a couple of these technical ones that we're bringing up right now. So I leave that to end my discussion on that, although I should go probably through the review letters because they're more engineering than planning. Let's do that for a second, if you don't mind. I think, great. GPI review letter. The primary focus I want to do is on page three, it has a series of comments. For the most part, I want to clarify a couple of things, but for the most part, we're going to agree to any of the technical comments, but there's some that need clarification. I just want to make sure for the board's benefit of that. Testimony on the building use, materials, I think the architect will talk about materials, waste generation and hours of operation have already been discussed. Average elevation, finished grades around the building. We have that on the plan. If it's not clear enough, we'll clarify that and make sure that we have that average grade correct around the building. Building heights and compliance with zoning, we will comply with building height. There's no question about that. We just want to make sure that we document it correctly so there's no misunderstandings through the rest of the compliance process, that we don't have an issue with that. Sidewalk should be considered along the building fringes for future connectivity. Again, if there's a plan and were the applicants open for that discussion, if that's something that's important? I think we can put it in. It may not be linear because of some of those utilities. We may have to swerve it a little to get around some of the existing features that are out there, but I think we can make it work.
With the Highlands restriction on the increase in-
It's in the right of way.
Okay. Want to make sure.
Okay, well, again, we looked it up and it's in the right of way and we should be okay with that. It says onsite.
All right. We've had that argument from other applicants, so I just wanted-
And again, I'll say this, is if they agree, we'll do it. I don't want to put the project in jeopardy with the Highlands exemption that we have already.
Well, here's the person that's making the determination on the Highlands exemption.
So, okay.
I already made that determination.
But I'll even say that, though, is even if we add that amount of square footage that's there, it's not a lot. My guess is we wouldn't even be over the quarter acre because we're below the quarter acre now. To take that whole strip, the 24-foot aisle and make that wall pavement, would definitely be over. Okay, that, you know, to take that whole thing where the grass pavers are.
Is it 24 or 30?
What's that? Oh, that's 34. Yeah, you know, if we made it down to 24, I think we'd be over. We're pretty substantially. But if the four-foot strip of a sidewalk along Century, that's not a lot, the square footage. I have to go back through the numbers, but we had some room in there. Not enough room to take that whole area where we have the grass pavers and make it there, but we could do something.
So we would agree to do that as a condition of approval, maybe so long as, in the opinion of the board planner, the project still qualifies for the Highlands exemption. the project still qualifies for the Highlands exemption, if that's the board's pleasure.
The next item was about standard duty pavement. We'll agree. I mean, we'll make sure that that's not a problem. Testimony in the accessible curved ramp in the southwest corner and the stairs. I think that's a detail. We'll work out the details to make that work. Just by the way, there was a question by someone about the end of that driveway when it goes from the pavement to the actual turf area. Right now, we have two posts and a chain across there that would have a Chevron on it. And it has a key lock, and next to it would be a Knox box that the fire department can get access to. So that's the detail that we would show for that on both sides. That would be towards the frontage and then towards the rear. So the detail was fairly simple. We don't see a lot of activity that would be in there, so it's not a gate or something that you have a lot of people going in and out. So a typical detail for that would be a post on both sides, a chain across there, some type of Chevron, so no one at 2:00 in the morning can drive through that. And then a key Knox box is the simplest way that I'm sure Parsipan uses as every other fire department around here uses a Knox box system. Yeah, there's a comment about some drainage in one of the parking spaces. To avoid that, we'll make that work. That's not an issue at all on number eight. Number nine is the conversation about those two additional reliefs we found in 43275V and 275H, both on the parking. I say the parking, the total width of the parking space for the trailer plus turnaround the area, 135-foot standard industry. But if we use your ordinance with the 76-one unit, we'll need relief on that. And then the 30-foot driveway where 275H says 24-foot max. Site triangles will provide. We checked it. But we'll provide the site triangles and site distance. We'll put that as part of any approval. That seems not to be a problem. Geometry in the northern driveway, same thing. We'll work that out in details to make that a little easier to work through there. There's some solutions where there's a couple of options in there, and we can work out that detail just to make that turning radius a little simpler. We'd have to widen out a little there, but not a big deal to make that work. All right, off-site runoff with the BNP manual. We do agree, and we'll change that and make sure that that works in the calculations in identifying that in the BNP manual. The underdrains, clarifying the capacity, that's not an issue on 13. 14's not an issue as far as the depth of below that, that three inches on both sides of the gravel. We'll put the locations on 15. Concrete retaining wall, we'll add that for the drain on the bottom of the wall. And then the O&amp;M manual, we'll update that with the comment from the engineer on 17. So we don't have any problem with any of those comments.
Okay, thank you.
I think on the planning comments, the biggest thing was the sidewalk, maybe? Let me just make sure.
I just have a couple of questions. There are a couple of walkways between the surrounding properties that are being removed, and I'm sure that has a lot to do with the use.
Yeah.
I just want you to touch on it.
It looks, I walked around there. It looks, every one of those is a different surface and a different method, and it looks like has, was constructed over time. It was probably not something planned. It was probably something that just evolved since the 70s when you had common, people are, maybe you had one that had too many parking on one spot, not enough parking, and they were sharing it. Or when they have had a cafeteria, and they're walking across the street to the cafeteria. But it looks like it wasn't a planned event. It just evolved over time. We're thinking with the use, it's probably not something that's going to happen and want to happen there. We can keep them. They don't have to go. But we just didn't think the uses to an office use next door weren't that compatible to have that.
I would agree. Given the use, I don't think that connectivity is warranted in the same way.
And generally, when you have this loading operation, you don't want a lot of people around there. I mean, it's just not, you know, with the turning movements and everything else. So we thought it wasn't a good idea to keep them.
Yeah, and if you're okay with the front sidewalk, too, that would eliminate that connectivity issue also. Or keep the connectivity.
Yeah, help. And where generally the pedestrians want to be is along the roadway as opposed to cutting in and out of parking lots that have truck-trailer movements.
So we're okay with sidewalk on the front?
And then those three sidewalks, both to the north, south, and east, that we would, we show them to be removed now. All right, that was it on the review letters. The other ones that were from the other professionals of the town, we didn't have any problems with those. You know, there's one on the sewer utility that worked through the details. One from the fire department on fire lanes, that none of those had any issues that we had. All right, that's it. I'm my director.
All right, actually, I'm going to turn to Andrew first.
Well, he addressed, he's going to address our comments, so I'm good.
You're good. Okay. Do we have any members of the board that have questions on this testimony at this time? Mr. Math?
Yeah, I do, but if anyone else wants to go first. Go ahead.
Thank you for that. Assuming that, I guess, Mr. Lucino is you as well. You guys are the owners of three and seven?
Three and seven, but not five.
Okay. I mean, is there a plan to ever try to push through into Halsey from Century Drive?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, just want to make sure on the record so that that's not ever in any of the plans. And will there be plans to create sidewalks all up and down Century Drive? I guess three to seven, but not five. Maybe five could be coercive in doing that? I feel like we missed a boat. All this construction in Century Drive, I mean, Century, Sylvan and Campus, we missed a boat in making these, not making, but suggesting that these developers build sidewalks because, you know, people want to get out and walk. I guess we missed out on that, so I just, any plans for up and down Century Drive?
Well, clearly, the applicant's willing to do it along their fringes. As far as going to other property owners and knocking on their doors and asking them, certainly, we haven't done that. You know, I don't think the applicant has either. But I understand the need, and it's important. And it ties into some public open space that's around there, too, that they may want to get into at lunchtime.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Math, did you have a...
All right, so I probably have about three different questions. I'll start with the sort of, the big one on noise. Do you know how far the loading docks are from Murray Court?
I'm just looking at another exhibit that I didn't present that... I'm going to guesstimate from the scale here about 1,000 feet.
Okay.
From, and again, I'm going to go back from the northeast corner of the property to those closest houses.
All right. Have you done any noise modeling?
No, we haven't.
Okay.
And again, the noise that we're talking about here would be, first of all, the trucks coming in would be regulated by DOT and the noise standards associated with that.
We had another warehouse application that, well, it's still going on. But they were only 150 feet from a property line, and they had to do a noise wall. That's why I ask. I think 1,000 feet, you're probably not going to have an issue. I guess the other ones are kind of minor. So when I looked at that rendering of the front driveway...
The north or the south?
No, the south, where with the grass. I guess we have, what is it, exhibit A3, that one over there?
This one or...
No, the one behind with the tree. No, 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 sitting on the bench at the very back. So what strikes me as a little strange, not strange, but the driveway looks like it's basically leading to the side of the building. A lot of times, if the intent is for the pavement to really go into the front, the front parking area, then that pavement kind of right by the, between the light posts and the grass is kind of useless. That right there.
So we can curve that.
Yeah, because you do like a flush curve.
And make it mountable?
Yeah, and make a radius out of it just to make it look like it's designed to go in?
I think so. That's a good suggestion.
Yeah, and then the other...
It softens the look.
Yeah, and the other end of it on the back, I was just curious if, sorry, making you switch exhibits. The trucks backing into that southern loading dock, are they going to have to go over the grass as shown?
The plan was not to, but again, I do see your point that they may have to drive into here a little more, and we may have to stretch that out and make sure that they can come another 20 feet into this location and back into there.
Okay, thank you. And I guess my last point, I think you pretty well showed and testified that you need a 30-foot drive aisle the entire way on the north end. I mean, to me, you definitely need the wider radius on either end when people are turning. But I was going to ask if you, if you're really short on a pervious and we need our sidewalk or whatever, can we think about trimming that?
It could be. Again, I'll say is the waistline of that driveway would be pretty small by the time you take that turning movement in here, you know, around that turn by the time you get that truck straightened out. And by the time you get the truck straightened out in this location, it would be a smaller distance. But it's a way that if we're stuck somewhere with the sidewalk, we can always, we can look to skinny that down.
Okay. Sort of my last little bit has to do with those five parking spaces and the walkway to get past them. I mean, first of all, it looks like the depressed curbs basically lead you right into the grass. Shouldn't there be like maybe a crosswalk?
We've had a whole debate about this. The whole motion, too, for the five parking spaces, we're almost, and we showed it on our plan, but we're almost debating whether we even need this sidewalk here. Because for the most part, I doubt that someone that parks in this parking space is going to walk away from the building, like walk down and go across this crosswalk here when they can just park and literally walk across the parking driveway. It's not a high volume. You do it in every supermarket you go to. You don't walk across the sidewalk at all. So after we did this, we debated it and said, do we even need the sidewalk in that location?
I mean, I agree with you. I'd say that's good. I would actually even suggest or ask, for those five parking spaces, would you be willing to potentially land bank them?
I, let me just check and see what... Yeah, the whole motion was reuse the existing that's there. So we wouldn't, then, yeah, we're trying to keep what was there already.
Okay, I mean, they just seem like they're going to be the very last spaces.
They will. We totally agree.
Just go for the variance for the last parking spaces and for worrying about what's the chances you're going to use those five?
I mean, my only thought is, number one, you do have, even though it's a pre-existing variance, you get a variance attached with that. Number two, with those five spots. Number two, I mean, okay, the 85th percentile demand for warehouse is one space per thousand, but the average is more like, is more like half a space per thousand at best, right? So you're theoretically overparked a little bit. Okay, I mean, you got 0.8 per thousand as well we put in this redevelopment plan. You know, so, and the fact is, those spaces are definitely the least attractive to the building.
Oh, there's no doubt.
It's a suggestion just to make everybody's life kind of...
And then the sidewalk would go away in that area?
Find out what the board wants.
That's what I said.
Not just what I want.
I agree, though.
Bank them.
Okay. We got rid of a variance.
Mr. DeDeech?
Well, no, if they're banked, you still have variance.
Still need a variance. It's just maybe easier to get.
And those five spaces would be removed and just replaced with grass or landscaping?
Okay, Mr. DeDeech?
Yep, so a couple of quick questions. One, there is no plan or we are not provisioning the truck trailers being parked on-site overnight? Because I don't see any parking for those.
Only if they're parked in the space, okay? In some larger facilities, we create separate parking areas for trailers. This is not one of those. So we do not have any other parking other than if the vehicle or the trailer would be backed into that loading spot and left overnight.
Okay.
But yeah, so we go and create new spaces just for that, and that is not the case here.
Okay, I mean, again, I ask this because we have one more application going on where they have provisioned certain parking spots for the trailers to be there.
We don't. Other than a trailer could be kept overnight in the regular loading dock space. We don't want to eliminate or preclude that. That's important to some of the operations. But they're not a storage off of the building. Only if they're in that loading spot itself.
Yeah, because the last thing you want is those trailers parked in an unapproved, you know...
Yeah, along the roadway, along back here. I get it.
And the second question is, I see there are two EV parking spots?
Correct.
And there are three ADA parking spots? It's not clear to me if the, one of the ADA parking spot could use the EV.
Construction department's going to probably require it. The new regs that just came out for construction that the EV parking spaces have to have...
One.
At least one, yeah.
We'll look at that to make sure.
Yeah, I think it looks easy to me, right? Just extend the one of the EV to that.
So the system that we have right now in our detail sheet is it's one post that's a twin. Okay, so you put it in between two parking spaces. So it accommodates both. If that needs to slide down one space, so it'll be a regular parking space for EV and then a parking space that would be an accessible parking space that would have the EV again. It's easy enough. We just take the post and move it down one spot.
What's happening now with the applications is we're approving them here at the board, and then my construction division is finding the regulations, and we're, the applicants are like losing a parking space. So I want to make sure that we bring it up because at the time of review now, say we approve, whatever we're at, 46 parking spaces, and you get approved by the board, and then I give it a zoning permit, and then you submit to my construction division, and they're reading the code, my building subcode official is saying that there has to be additional space for the EV. It's causing applicants to return to the board. So I'm trying to say that we put something in there should that happen. It doesn't cause you to come back here to the board because building subcode is reviewing it as needing extra space for that handicapped EV.
So if the code requires X number of accessible spaces, let's just say in this case, we've got three accessible spaces or two accessible spaces, is it, the EV space has to be an additional accessible space?
Additional.
Correct.
An additional accessible space.
Additional accessible space. And they had to have that, almost that van parking space. So there's probably like five applications right now that are being reviewed downstairs that were already board applications and now will not meet with the board here, what we approved for parking because of that additional requirement. So starting effective now, when I'm here, I'm going to bring it up so that we put something in there that should that happen, that doesn't trigger you to come back for an additional variance that we were aware of that there's the possibility of losing a space.
I haven't heard that. I understand what you're saying. We haven't experienced that yet.
Yeah, it literally, it was the last month. They, I'm the zoning officer and I'm the department head of construction and zoning. So they came to me and said, how are we going to address this with these applications? So I just, if there's something we can do now that we're ready, so in case that does come about.
Couldn't they just put another EV charger at the, at one of the ADA seats?
Well, the problem is a charging space is not a space.
So you currently have 53 spaces with the EV credit. You only need 52, so if you lose one, you're still okay.
Still, I still meet the zoning ordinance.
You'll still meet the parking.
Well, with the land bank, I think you can actually get away with losing one of the ADA spots, too, technically.
Because we'd be underneath the 50.
Correct, so you could actually probably turn that into your...
Okay, so we got a couple of things going for us here.
I just don't want it to trigger people because if it changes, as zoning officer, I can't allow without coming back to the board. So I just want to make sure during these applications, we kind of leave ourselves some room to play with that.
I'll say clearly, between now and any resolution, we can, I can solve this. You know, so we can put some language loosely in there. And by the time a resolution is written, I think we'll be in pretty good shape. I can review it with you.
What the building subcode official, how he is interpreting it and make sure that we're all on the same page.
That'd be fine. We can make that work.
I mean, it's one thing to meet the numbers, but the other thing is to be being tactical, right? So that the person needing assistance is able to leverage on the EV spot side, so. Thank you.
Any other questions? Michael?
Yeah, getting back to the bottom terminal there that Gordon pointed out might have a backing turning radius. Can't you make that bottom terminal the trash compactor station, and then they won't be using it?
We could. Generally, if we have multiple tenants, you want to put it in the middle just because they can share it easier that way. But we could look at that, so we can pick that and put it down at this location.
Then you eliminate the problem of backing into that bottom terminal.
Yeah, let us look at that as an option. If we have the flexibility by the time, again, we get the compliance in there, that we can look at that as an option. We're not stretched out in any lot coverage or anything else other than that quarter acre, so we have some playroom with some of these things that we can make work.
One last question on the signs. So you're looking for a grand total of 186 square feet of signage?
Correct.
When our ordinance allows 150 feet.
Correct.
Our other application, actually, the one that we were talking about, they did propose two signs, separate tenants for the same reason, and their signs are only 75 feet each. How critical are those extra 14 feet on each sign?
Well, I'll give you the benefit of this. Look at the architecture. You're not seeing that yet. Look the presentation from the architect. Listen to that. I'm coming back as the planner, and we can talk through those and look at the justification for that, and, you know, see where any of that relationship could be when you look at the details. We can talk about that.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one more. On that honeycomb area, would there be any signage for the emergency vehicles to know that they could drive here?
That who can drive? Emergency services?
Yeah, emergency services, yeah.
Typically, we don't on something like that. It's something that's, you know, approved. They've had a review, your district's of the fire district already, looked at this already. Typically, you would have pre-fire plans for these, that the department would know that they exist this way. It's pretty obvious that it exists this way. We could put Fire Lane up, if the board feels comfortable, a sign that says Fire Lane.
Something, you know, last thing you want is, you know, emergency vehicle is there, but they're not aware, they could drive, and then they're standing, you know?
We could put a sign up, especially on the front side, we can put a sign up, say Fire Lane.
That'd be great, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, one more.
Your plan shows curb along the...
It does.
Yeah. Michael?
And the other applicant, we talked about if there's snow on the ground, the fire department may not see exactly where he can drive his truck around the back of the building.
There's curbs though, so they will...
You're gonna have curbs?
We, for that reason, one of the things we did is we put curbs in.
Oh, okay.
Try to define that. I mean, in three foot of snow, no, you know, but if you have our, you know, typical snow that we get these days, you'll be able to see that distinction that's along there. And...
The only thing with those that we're finding is that the grass dies. So the grass dies, and then now it looks like coverage. So it's that, it's that in-between where the grass is dying, and people have been driving on it, and it's in-between. So we're in zoning, talking about how we're gonna try to get people to maintain that grass, that coverage, because when the grass dies, it's no longer...
And it's always an issue. Correct. Like anything else is, you gotta maintain this stuff. And just like stormwater management now that requires, you know, O and M manuals and maintenance and recording, this has to be maintained. And I have some of them I've done 30, 40 years ago around larger facilities for J and J. They look gorgeous. But J and J throws a ton of money at their landscape budget, and it looks great. You know, other ones, as you said, that don't look well at all after time.
If we do the chain, like you said, there won't be people driving on it, and the grass won't be maintained.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you probably put it covenant of some sort in the operations manual, recording, maintenance. You don't have a problem with that.
No problem.
All right. We got everybody? Good. And I've got one for myself. Sound attenuation. Getting to the corner, that when I look at the tax map, and I see the 200-foot notice distance around the tax map, and just looking at it from the east northeast corner of the property in question, it really appears that Murray Court's only about 500 feet away from the property. Not from the loading docks, but about 500 feet from the property. That's just my uneducated guess. And I was just wondering, you're spending some good money on some trees. Have you looked into making it so that they are, towards that corner, that they would be evergreen, so that you have winter coverage with some sound attenuation? I recognize you have to follow the state law that requires that at night you only have a 50 decibel sound. But shortly after hearing this other case that we've referred to, I was walking, out walking in the morning, and I was at the foot of Celtic, which is near my house, and at the top of Celtic, which is a thousand feet away, there was a garbage truck backing up. And it was noticeable. It wasn't a terrible thing. It wasn't loud, but it was noticeable. And at 2:00 in the morning, when a grandchild is falling asleep in your bedroom, that could affect the quality of the living there. So I'm just looking for some indication that, number one, you're planning on sticking with, following our laws of 50 decibels at the property line, and something to at least modestly attenuate the sound. And what that other case presented was that they thought that they could find a combination of trees that would seriously knock down the sound in the wintertime. And I would just love to hear that that's in your thoughts. And just...
Chair, we'll agree, to the extent that's not already the case in the plans, to work with your planner or engineer to ensure that that tree intenuation barrier is created.
I think, given that the possibility that we might be also seeing seven here, that that's a lot closer to Murray Court, and we're gonna be very insistent that the neighbors not be disturbed by the activity at night.
So we'll agree to that as a condition.
Okay. Thank you.
Good suggestion.
Yep. All right.
On that note, just if the engineer can comment, the area that we would need it would be in the vicinity of the detention basin. It looks like you have room to...
I think so, yeah. And we got a fair amount of planning on here already that we can add some more to along this, in this corner of the property.
Right.
In the northeast corner. I mean, there's room in here that we can add to that.
Very good. All right. No other members of the board have questions? Hearing and seeing none. Are there members of the public who have questions on this witness, this testimony? If you could come up, identify yourself again. Again, this is time for questions only on the testimony provided.
Can I have a question? I live in Murray Court, and I want to thank you guys very much for representing us with the noise. I can, my granddaughter's bedroom, I could see the basin that they're talking about. That's how close it is. So thank you for that, everyone. My second concern is the flood zone. Murray Court, the last two houses, I'm the third house from this property, the last two, the two houses are closer to that are in the flood zone. And I heard about all of the basins and everything you're doing. Can you please just summarize how Murray Court will not be flooded because of the new construction of the warehouse?
So, a couple things. First of all, today, you just have one small basin that's there for all that impervious coverage. The new plan will have substantially more volume of storage of stormwater with the same amount of impervious coverage that's there today. Right? So from the standpoint of there'll be more structures or more volume being held back from that water getting to that location. Some of it goes into the ground, some of it gets treated before it's discharged. Will flooding disappear from what that is today? Likely not. Not disappear, but...
We don't see any flooding yet.
Good. So I'll say this, is the calculations clearly show that from this site, there'll be less peak runoff during a flood or flow than what's there today. That's what the calculations show, by us constructing all these new facilities on this property. So there'll be less of an impact from a stormwater and flooding standpoint with these improvements for this new project than what exists on the property today.
As putting the efforts from what you're doing, and with all these plans...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, ma'am. Could you just speak in?
Have they been taken under consideration by Six Sylvan Way, which is right next to it, right on Sylvan Way?
Yeah. I don't know. I haven't designed that, so I can't answer that. I know that's another project.
But I'm saying, well, what you're doing, and what you're proposing, and it looks like it's gonna be approved, considering, will any of that be taken under consideration with the Six Sylvan project, which is very close? And you talk about Lifetime Fitness, which is there, and you talk about the 286 housing units, which are going up right, two doors from me, three doors from me. And there's, we have a buffer now. You're not taking our buffer, that's what I heard. You're not taking our buffer down. So that part's good. You're reinforcing the basins. That's very good. But I wanted to make sure that what they're, what you're proposing, they're not able to come in and change any of that? Would that be a possibility?
Their project has the steam on them their own. You know, they can't take a benefit from what we're doing on this property. And the other thing too, just to remind yourself and the board, the water that goes into these detention basins themselves actually don't go towards you. They actually go out to Sylvan, and they actually go to the small stream channel that's along Sylvan. And we at first couldn't understand that. But they're literally, it goes into a pipe network that discharges from this location here, and I'm gonna point to your back for a second, but actually goes down away from your site. So the only flow that you would get off of this property is in the extreme flood conditions, where it's above the design capacity of these stormwater basins. So this is a 100-year storm plus an additional 25% that would go over there. But every storm, including the 100-year storm and plus 25%, goes into that pipe and goes away from your property, on this particular property. That's probably not the case totally with the Six Sylvan, because that drains, it looks like, back towards your property. Okay, that does. But here, which is a little odd, because we're kind of on a little bluff right here, it actually drains back the other way towards your channel and Sylvan.
Any other members of the public have questions on this witness and this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. At this time, I'd like to talk to Connor Hughes of Dynamic for traffic testimony.
Please raise your hand. Do you swear from the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
My name is Connor Hughes. Last name spelled H-U-G-H-E-S. Business address is 245 Main Street, Chesapeake, New Jersey. And that's Dynamic Traffic.
And could you provide the board with some background on your experience in licensure?
Certainly. I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. License is in good and current standing. I have a bachelor's of science in civil engineering from N J I T as of 2017. So I've been practicing for about seven years or so, in which time I've performed hundreds of traffic studies for various different uses, residential, commercial, industrial. Actually worked on a couple of the projects with Cary that Noah mentioned earlier, the Woodland Park project, Foreman Park project. So we're fairly familiar with those as well. I've also accepted it over 20 boards as an expert in traffic engineering. I think that's all right.
Mr. Chairman, we ask that Mr. Hughes be accepted as an expert here for purposes of traffic engineering.
Any questions on Mr. Hughes's qualifications to present to us as an expert?
Hearing and seeing none.
Thank you.
Please describe the traffic points of this project.
Certainly. So we already kind of walked through all the site circulation, parking, and all of that, so I won't really get too deep into that. Our engineer did a good job thoroughly going through all those points. So I'll get right into the traffic impacts and how we analyze the impacts of the additional traffic generation from the site. So the first step of that is establishing our existing conditions. We did that by performing manual traffic counts, particularly at the intersection of Sylvan and Century. We did those during the weekday morning and afternoon, typical rush hours, peak hours. Specifically, we did those on Thursday, September 7th of last year, 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning, and it's 4:30 to 6:30 in the afternoon. We did make sure, of course, that school is in session during those times, it was right at the beginning of the school year, but that school traffic was accounted for. And then, once we have those counts in place, what we do is isolate the single highest peak hour of traffic volume. And we found that the peak hour occurred from 8:00 to 9:00 in the morning, and 4:45 to 5:45 in the afternoon. And those two hours are essentially the basis for our analysis in terms of the operations at the intersection and the driveways as well. So once we have those existing conditions established, our next step is to look into the future, project our future conditions. The first part of that is establishing what's called the no build conditions. That's looking into the future, usually about two years, without consideration of the site traffic first, to kind of set a baseline. So we took a background growth. We utilized, New Jersey DOT publishes background growths based on roadway types, county locations, things like that. So based on those parameters, we established a background growth, grew the existing volumes for two years, also added in any adjacent traffic volumes. There's obviously a lot going on in the area, so we made sure to account for those as well. And that, again, is just for the no build conditions. Once we have those established, now we project our traffic for the site itself, and add those on top to establish our future build conditions. So we did that by utilizing the ITE trip generation rates, as I'm sure you've heard many traffic engineers mention before. They're essentially based on empirical counts conducted at many similar types of developments across the country. So they're based on those actual count data points to establish their average rates. So we took a look at those, and particularly the land use 150, which is called warehousing. It's essentially their generic warehousing use, which, as you heard earlier, that is our anticipated operations here, to be sort of a generic warehouse user, not a fulfillment setter or anything like that. So that's why we elected to use that particular use. ITE also has a breakdown of, for the warehousing uses, car, passenger car traffic versus truck traffic. So we made sure to break those down as well. Based on the ITE, they project 13%, or based on their counts, 13% of the morning peak hour trips, and 15% of the PM peak hour trips are trucks, the rest being passenger cars. So based on that, just the actual numbers itself, so based on the roughly 65,000 square foot warehouse that we're proposing, in the morning peak hour, it would be a total 31 trips. That includes 27 cars or trucks. In the afternoon, that would be 34 total trips. That includes 29 cars and five trucks. So just based on those numbers, again, it's a minimal number of truck trips, as we've talked about. Based on the size of the use, the type of the use that's anticipated, those truck trips are not anticipated to be very high volume. They'll be sporadic throughout the day. And then, what we also wanted to show is a comparison of if this existing office building, although vacant right now, say it was reoccupied, what that would look like in terms of traffic generation compared to what we're proposing for the warehouse. And when we look at those numbers, we find that the warehouse projections are well below what a fully reoccupied office building would look like, in the realm of about 70% less peak hour traffic trips. So again, obviously, right now, it's pretty much vacant, but just wanted to show that comparison, just as, you know, another point as to why we feel why the warehouse will be a favorable use for this particular property. So again, substantial reduction compared to the potential reoccupation of that office. We didn't take any consideration for any of those existing trips, for the, any office trips in our analysis. We assumed that it was basically a vacant piece of property. But again, those warehouse trips will effectively have much less of an impact than that full warehouse, or, sorry, full office. And it's also, the warehouse trips would be below what we consider to be a significant increase in traffic. increase in traffic. DOT sets forth 100 new peak hour trips as to what they consider a significant increase. We are at, again, around 30 to 40 trips per hour, per peak hour, so we're well below that threshold, even without any consideration of what might be existing. Getting into the actual operations, in terms of levels of service at the intersection of Sylvan and Century and the site driveways, we looked at the no-build versus the build conditions with all those considerations, and essentially, there was no change in the operating conditions that we found, with or without the additional site traffic. In the no-build conditions, the worst level of service for the intersection was a level of service D, that's the Century Drive approach up to Sylvan, that maintains a level of service D. And the site driveways are both with such a little amount of volume on Century, going to be a level of service A, so we expect favorable conditions at the driveways as well. So, again, effectively no operational differences at the intersection of Sylvan and Century, and the driveways will also operate under very favorable conditions. So just to kind of sum it all up, again, this trip generation represents effectively a decrease, if you compare that to what a reoccupied office would look like, and even without consideration of that office or any existing trips into and out of the site, we're not considering what's called a significant increase in traffic. Again, the truck trips will be minimal, not only during the peak hours, but also throughout the day. Those overnight hours, which obviously are a sensitive issue, we don't anticipate a high volume of trucks coming in or out during those hours, it can happen from time to time, but the majority of those deliveries or pickups would be during more typical business hours. And again, at the intersection of Sylvan and Century, as well as the driveways, we really don't anticipate any operational change with the addition of the site traffic for the warehouse. So, pretty much concludes my direct, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Start with our engineer, Andrew, do you have any?
Yeah, did you look at level of service at Sylvan and Route 202, Littleton?
We didn't specifically, only because of the amount of trips that we're projecting. Once it gets down to Century and Sylvan, they kind of distribute out, they become less and less, sorry. And with the operations at Sylvan and Century not really changing, and those intersections at Littleton or Dryden being larger capacity intersections, there are both traffic signals, they're able to handle more volume, we wouldn't anticipate that those smaller volumes getting out to those intersections would change any of their operations.
But now you're adding a few more trucks, you didn't have any trucks there before. As you're probably aware, at Route 202, Littleton, particularly at Route 10, highly congested.
Yes.
Has, there've been discussions about truck circulation and approach routes and egress, ingress and egress into Century Drive from Sylvan?
Certainly. So, we don't anticipate the trucks getting all the way up to 202, we would more than likely have them come in 287, Route 10, up Dryden, and then Sylvan over to the site that way, to avoid that intersection, avoid that corridor 202, and they would exit out that same way, taking a left on Sylvan, down Dryden, back out to Route 10 and 287, as it connects to 80, they can get down to 78 that way, so that would be our primary access.
So you've thought about it, because that is the preferred route, what you're describing?
Yes.
I didn't see or hear any testimony on that as of yet, what, what the route is, what, you know, you're intending for the, for the trucks. So, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
That the truck route will, will, will not, you know, will be basically no left-in from Sylvan and no right-out from, from Century, you're going to be going toward Dryden?
Yes, yeah, isolated.
T-mobles.
We're not, I think what we're saying is, what is anticipated, they're not going to restrict right?
On other applications, we had kind of, had, they were driveways off of Sylvan, and they, they were kind of crafted to encourage the truck drivers and signage, signage and driveway egress and to discourage movements toward Route 202. We don't have that here, because we have, you know, Sylvan and Century. I'm looking for applicants' ideas on how we can discourage truck movements using Route 202.
You're saying 202 north, you mean, or?
South either, because you have, you have congestion at Route 10 going around those jack handles.
I mean, I, I think, other than suggesting to, to drivers a preferred truck route, I think, you know, that's something that we could certainly do.
I just want to throw it out there for the board's consideration.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Just a quick question. With the apartment units that they are putting up, did you factor that into your calculation?
You talk about the 280 units, right, and the like?
Yep.
Yeah, so it's not specifically listed in our adjacent developments that we looked into. We do have the background growth, which helps account for that, account for that to some degree, but it wasn't specifically noted in our, in our developments.
I mean, there's a lot of this going up all over the place. That's not in, not in the equations now, but I get it, you're working with what's now.
Yep, and based on the existing levels of service that we found, at least at Sylvan and Century, there is some reserved capacity there to take on some of that additional traffic. I don't know if the traffic study was conducted specifically for that site or not, and work on that one, but...
That one hasn't come to us yet, right? That's just a redevelopment plan at this point? Yes.
I believe we just got that.
It's been submitted.
Yeah.
It's been submitted, but it's not confirmed.
I think that was the big pile on my chair.
Okay.
Big pile on your chair.
Yeah, I mean, we called the township too, we were in the early stages, to ask about adjacent developments, it wasn't specifically listed, so that's more the main reason why it wasn't necessarily specifically included. But I can imagine that there's going to be a study done for that site as well, which can help get a better idea of those exact impacts.
Planning to plan.
Two quick questions. First, so, just doing the math from what you're saying, it sounds like the office building generated 100 trips an hour, peak hours, correct?
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Okay, so even if this warehouse became one of the higher-intensity warehouse uses, like a parcel hub, it's still well below that?
Let me double-check for you, but again, I'll just head that off with, we don't really anticipate it based on the size or the users that we're looking at for it to get to that level, but let me just get those numbers out for you real quick, so I can find it through all my papers here. So, for the parcel hub that you mentioned, that would be about, it's actually, the equations are so low or so high for, that it shows us a negative number of trips, the way it works out. But just a different one, for instance, for fulfillment center, for A M, for A M peak hours, 56 total trips.
Okay.
And P M would be 70.
So it's still below?
Right, exactly.
All right. One of the problems we've had in this campus, and I don't know if it's come back after COVID, is levels of service at Sylvan and Century in the afternoon were garbage because queuing backed all the way up from 202. So, everyone had to rely on courtesy gaps.
Okay.
When you did your traffic counts, did you observe that, or, like, did you observe queuing blocking the intersection?
Not as a chronic issue, I think it did back up, or the ones were twice up to that point.
Okay.
But there's so little traffic coming out of Century, that even somebody that's exiting, like you said, either there was queuing, would have to rely on a courtesy gap, or they would just, they'd have to merge into the traffic as, as needed, but we didn't anticipate that as, or we didn't observe that as a chronic.
So it wasn't continuous through the P M peak hour?
Right, it wasn't like for the whole two hours that we counted.
Because before COVID, it was.
Right.
You backed up constantly there.
Yeah.
So, just another quick question, because I haven't seen the actual study. What was the volume on Sylvan Way in the P M peak hour?
I'll put that down for you.
Per, per direction?
Along Sylvan, right? So, here it is. Sorry, just a second. Here we go. So, A M peak hour, Sylvan Way eastbound was 345, westbound was 148.
Okay.
And then, P M, eastbound was about 140, and westbound was about 730.
730?
Mm-hmm. Right, in the, in the P M.
So, okay. I mean, I'm asking for a whole different reason, but just trying to understand if we need all four lanes. That's, we've, we talked about this last time, we had an application here. On Sylvan. Can we lose a lane when we convert all to housing? That was the question. All right, thanks.
Nick?
Thank you for all that. I don't think there's, the traffic can be minimal in your project compared to other ones that we have in the area. I do echo Mr. Catgiano's concern about trucks up on 202 North, he also mentioned South, but definitely not 202 North. Anything you can do to keep them away from there, we really appreciate. Probably an operational thing, but how many workers are there in the overnight hours? And will that affect the amount of trips overnight by trucks? How many employees would there be roughly be overnight, would that add to the trip for the trucks overnight?
I think that, I mean, Mr. Krismer could come up and make an estimate, but it's really going to depend upon the tenants, I think the testimony he gave earlier was, it would be very minimal, if any, overnight, but, you know, there are tenants that are going to want that, that capability. That's what he testified to.
Okay. And then, out of curiosity, the I T E report, does that include, I don't know what the last edition was, assuming it was more recent, but...
This is the last four, five years.
Does that include DoorDash deliveries and things like that, or this is just?
Not specific.
Amazon truck deliveries, are those included?
They would be, if they entered the site, they were counted, this doesn't specify whether they're a delivery employee, whatever, but if they drove into the site during the conduct of their counts, it would have been accounted for.
Okay, so it's not just workers and the trucks, it could be any, any of the...
Yeah, anybody that comes in or out of the site.
Okay.
It's counted as a trip.
All right, thank you.
Any other members? Mr. Ladie, you, Mr. Jim?
Mr. Mayor? I'm good.
You're good. None down here? Are there any members of the public who have questions on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring up Mr. Don Kim of K S S Architects to discuss the architectural aspects of the project.
If you please raise your right hand, do you swear from the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name for the record, and provide your address.
My name is Don Kim, my last name is K-I-M, and business address is 337 Witherspoon Street in Precinct.
All right, and could you provide the board with some background on your experience in licensure?
Sure. I'm a Senior Associate K S S Architects, under license architect, also a lead professional. I hold a Bachelor of Architecture degree from the Boston Architectural College.
Can you speak into the microphone, either by sitting or, you know?
How's that?
Better, thank you.
Okay. I hold a Bachelor of Architecture degree from the Boston Architectural College in 2005. I've been an architectural professional for about 20 years, I've been licensed for about 12 years, I'm licensed in the state of California and the state of New Jersey, I'm also a member of the American Institute of Architects.
We offer Mr. Kim as a expert in architecture.
Any questions on Mr. Kim's qualifications? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Please provide the architectural aspects of this project to the board.
Sure, thank you.
You don't want to break the door's mic. Yeah, don't break the mic.
Okay, I'll try to, I'll try to keep it brief here, not duplicate some of the information that's already been stated here. I'll start with just a little bit about the building organization and the features of the building. It's about 65,000 square feet, as we mentioned earlier. It's about a 270 feet by 240-foot, single-story footprint, we mentioned earlier, that is designed as a multi-tenant facility. We're showing two, two placeholder facilities at the moment, on each corner, the northwest corner and the southwest corner.
I'm sorry, was this exhibit provided previously? Was this, is this part of the plan? Okay. All right, then we're good.
PB 101.
Well, I think we've marked this as an exhibit previously.
Do you want to mark it, or is it already provided? That's, if it was already...
It was provided.
All right, then we're good.
We, obviously, the loading days and the related lighting is positioned to the backside of the property, away from the public street. We have strategically positioned the office areas, as well as all the entries, facing the public street. The building will be protected by a, fully protected with the latest industry-standard sprinkler system, detection system, alarm systems, and it will be compliant with all the comments received from the Township Power Department. I think we mentioned earlier that the building height is about 45 feet, which is consistent with township ordinance. There are four main building elevations shown here. A little bit about the building construction, we're proposing the main building materials to consist of insulated, low-bore, painted, precast concrete panels, also an abundance of high-performance glazing, and then some architectural accent panels for different system color and material and texture. All of these materials will be coated with a high-performance coating for longevity. We've really put a lot of effort into providing an abundance of glazing, not just at the main office areas and the entries, but also a series of clear stories throughout the main building floor areas, and then in particular as well, significant glazing here in what's called the staging bay. The staging bay is essentially the last bay, closest to the modded dock, where the majority of warehouse employees typically spend the majority of their time. So, we feel very strongly about glazing, and how important glazing is to the wellness of not only the main office tenants, but also the main warehouse workers as well. I think we also mentioned earlier that we're proposing one sign at each of the office areas to cover the potential of the multi-tenants. I'll just put up the newer Hendricks, we had taken a look at the southwest corner view earlier, this is another view from the northwest corner this time, we have another one that's close up, I'll put up after, after this one.
So this is a rendering of the northwest corner, prepared by your office?
Yeah.
Okay. And it'll be A 11?
You need to get a pen and just mark that as A 11.
With today's date.
With today's date, thank you, Mr. Chairman. With today's date, thank you, Mr. David.
So we have endeavored here to really break down the facades through an expression of office areas, using different types of reveals and overhangs, obviously the signage we alluded to earlier, some decorative accent lighting, and really strategic changes in material, colors, and textures that are attempting to be in keeping with the existing site context and the scale. In particular, we are looking to utilize a wood nook, really because we're looking to create a sense of warmth and natural feeling and connection with the existing site, which is quite picturesque, a lot of trees, a lot of beautiful turf on site currently. So we're looking to make the building feel part of that landscape that exists today. We feel, we're very proud to be able to push design beyond, you know, typical warehouse vanilla box. We really look to use a lot of different types of materials. Again, we really feel strongly about daylighting, the performance of the exterior facades, and the wellness of the people that will be inside the building. Some of the key sustainability aspects, obviously the stormwater management that we spoke to earlier is a significant one. The building enclosure will be high-performance, insulated, precast, concrete panels, very energy-efficient, high-performance daylighting, and obviously our attention to the occupants and the wellness of them is also a significant sustainability feature. Just in overall, ultimately, we're just looking to breathe some new life into this area.
May I conclude your direct testimony? So questions, Mr. Chairman?
Any questions by members of the board on architecture? I'm going to start with Ms. Smith down at the end.
We were looking at the metal canopy, the, I guess we should call it the orange rust. Is that on the site plan? Because the metal canopy would be building coverage and it would be setbacks. Is that on the site plan page, the canopy?
I believe the building facade on the ground level pushes onwards on the floor plan, floor plan in time.
So it doesn't extend, like, from that, it's hard to tell how it extends out. Does that, does the orange canopy extend more than two feet from the facade wall?
It may be a little bit beyond the facade wall.
Okay. Because it's not on the site plan page, the canopy, so I was just curious. Because that would be building coverage and setback coverage, the metal canopy. But because of the point, it's hard to tell if it extends further than generally. I'm just curious.
I think it's pretty, I think the first floor glazing is set in by about somewhere between five and 10 feet from the upper-level envelope. So it's more of a recess on the ground floor at those office areas.
Let me just add, I think that's probably a question for our engineer.
I understand the question, but most of the building in that location...
Microphone, please.
Yes. All right, most of the building is setback, that this protrudes to the rear, this glass is farther back. This line here is shown on our plan.
That dash line represents that...
Yeah, so that dash line...
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it's a good question, because we don't want it secondary. So that dash line, that's the end, is, represents that line right here. Okay, so that dash line all across that face, so it's indented, and it's no closer to the building than the other portions of the building, no closer to the setback. So the illusion is, because that slope, it's there, but if you can see that dash line on our plan here, that is the overhang, okay? And it's on both ends. The closest point of the building to the road, or not to the road, but the closest point is here, this actually, the line of the building that has no canopy, is setback the same distance as the canopy.
Okay, good.
Okay, so we did take that imprint from his view on the top and made sure that was represented correctly. I think the angle makes it look...
It makes it look like it extends farther out. Thank you.
Mr. Mathieu?
So Ms. Smith stole my, one of my questions. The other question has to do with the signage itself and the size of it. I guess, I understand from the engineering testimony, each of these two signs proposed to be 93 square feet. Who determined that size? Were you the expert that determined that size, or do we need to be asking planner?
We did determine that size. It is a little bit of an art and a science. We do want to make sure that the signs are visible from the street. We do want them to be functional, but obviously we also don't want it to be closely oversized either. So we believe this is a fitting sign for this distance from the street, and it's in keeping with the building design.
Would a 275 square foot signs be visible?
I think we could take a look at that. They're about 90, a little over 90 each right now.
93, I believe.
So it'd be about a 15 foot, 18 foot reduction in both.
I think the question kind of, what was the analysis?
Yes.
I think I'm asking a question. Because each application is different, each building is going to be different in terms of where it is and where they are from the street, et cetera. What was the analysis that went into that size relative to the, to the building and the street? You said part art, part science. What was the part science and what was the part art? And you kind of, what was the rationale behind that?
Yeah, there are certainly some benchmarks we do look at, but ultimately, there's a lot of different view angles. And in this instance, Century Drive also happens to be, I believe, slightly skewed, not initially perfectly parallel. But we use computer simulations like this computer model image that, to test in general how we feel, and if it feels like it'll be, you know, generally visible at a functional level.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, I just think the, these signs compared to the other one that we were talking, that's kind of in the back of your mind, these are much lower.
Are they, or is the sign itself going to be recessed back and attached to the facade? Or are they actually coming up off the canopy?
Yeah, right now, they are resting on top of the canopy.
That's a variance, because wall signs attached to the building have to be attached to the facade. If they're on a canopy-like structure, they're considered roof-type signs, and the ordinance allows no rooftop signs. I do signs of persecution, it's a legal requirement.
Yeah, we missed that part of the ordinance.
If that's an additional variance, we would be requesting, we would be requesting that relief.
Yeah, I don't want to be the bad guy when you come for your permit and I have to tell you that it's...
No, no, this is, this is really good. We have the catch-all in the notice for the variances. That's why it's there. If this triggers a variance, so be it. We're trying, obviously, to produce a very state-of-the-art, pleasing building, as Mr. Crismer testified to before, you know, sort of a state-of-the-art warehouse that is going to look really nice in the area. And this is one of the features, I think, that the applicant believes is going to spruce up the building and make it look nice. If that triggers a variance, then that's fine, let's just make sure we note it.
So we're going to have a variance for being on the roof?
On the canopy.
On the canopy.
The sign being on top of the canopy.
It's considered roof, it's considered rooftop?
Yeah.
Because it's on the canopy and not attached directly on the facade. Sign ordinance is very specific on that.
So as far as sign area, there's no standard for it being on top of the canopy, then?
It will, the canopy is considered just like the roof. It's on top of a structure, and the ordinance says no rooftop signs.
I think I'm getting that we're potentially eliminating the sign area.
Size, sign area variance.
You need one for...
It would still be sign area, because I still need to calculate the sign area when I issue a permit.
Right.
Because there's still a maximum size of a sign.
But, but no...
But there's also a section of the ordinance that talks about where a sign can be attached, and there's a section that says there's no rooftop signs. This was very popular, I don't know if it was in the 80s, you saw them all over. People applied for variances for them. So then they created a section that said, and everyone just, they got a variance for it. So I just want to make sure that we're covered on that.
So if, if I could kind of summarize what you said about the size, it sounds like the size was necessary because Century, the building, is not parallel to Century Drive, and there's a very wide angle, angle at one point, the southern end. Is that what I heard you testify to?
No, that was just a part of the explanation, that it's not necessarily so straightforward. It is, in general, the approach here was try to make sure that we provide tenant flexibility to be able to have a decent amount of presence of their signage from the street, which is in certain ways setback from the building. I believe the one sign limit is 150. We thought that with splitting that into two signs, having each one being 93 was reasonable request.
Any other questions of the architect? This testimony? Any members of the public have questions of the architect on this?
I just had one comment regarding the elevations. In the center of the, I'm sorry, it's the west elevation front of the building, it says there's a building-mounted sign. We are only posing two, there isn't a third one, correct?
That's right, that was, we forgot to take off that note from the middle.
Okay.
All right. Any members of the public have any questions on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
I'd like to call back Mr. Kennedy to provide his planning testimony. This will be our last one.
Oh, good. The last, last time we told the people we had to stop everything at 10:10, so I want to be consistent.
Eight minutes.
I'll talk quick.
I'm still on the record?
Yes, I'm still on the record.
Thank you. All right, I'm just going to summarize, I went through the variances themselves. I'm going to summarize just some of the basic zoning concepts that we're talking about here. First of all, the property itself is in the ORL zone. It's in the overlay eight zone that was just done last year. We are consistent with the uses associated with this, and for the most part, we're complying with the bulk standards as far as lot coverage, building coverage, the parking lot standards with the number of spaces, although that's a little influx now with this bank parking, but, you know, overall, that, that. Our planning attempts and the design attempts here, we're really to take what was a existing developed site, modernize that with a new use, and try to incorporate some of the features that were there already. Existing driveways, the general disturbance areas of the site, where things were on the property and trying to reuse that. That was our intent with the design parameters that we had. Obviously, on a series of minor items, we need relief on those. And under the statute, under 4055D70C2, relief that we're looking for is that it needs to comply with a couple of things for this board, to understand it, approve it, and feel comfortable with this approval. It needs to relate to a specific piece of property. It can't be generalized for all properties anywhere in the town. It needs to advance the purposes of zoning. It has to, benefits have to substantiate outweigh any detriments, has no substantial detriment to the public good, and then lastly, not impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zone ordinance. The benefits of this plan is to repurpose and underutilize property. That's why this town and this board sought to rezone the property with this overlay. It maintains the impervious coverage of what we have today, even though we could go higher than that to a certain degree, but we all have the limits associated with the Highlands and the Highlands restrictions. We want to enhance the streetscape along Century with a new building that has a fresher flair than what certainly exists there today. Update the landscaping along there. And the other benefits of new stormwater management, that meets a lot of the green infrastructure criteria that just doesn't exist today on a 1970s type of property. For the specifics, we have on the parking setback, it's 430-450, where we have the five parking spaces that are six and a half foot versus 10 foot. Now, we're talking about potentially, with the board's discretion, banking those, so it would still need relief, but there would be a low probability that they would ever be built and certainly ever be used. But if they were, they would have a pretty insignificant impact on the zone plan in order to build those spaces. And as I stated previously, we're removing 37 non-conforming spaces to the north and additional 16 non-conforming spaces to the south. So we're making this plan less non-conforming than what's there today. On the slope disturbances, again, it's all made slopes that were done back when the original project was built in the 1970s, primarily along that detention basin. But we do need relief from 430, 345.0C for slope disturbance in those areas. Again, no detrimental impact, it's stabilized area, we're not disturbing something that has existed for a long time with vegetation that we're going to cause unintended consequences. These are just grass lawn areas that have side slopes associated with the basins, they're going to be repurposed, will create new side slopes that'll be just as steep, if you want to call it that, for these new detention basins. The next item is the fence and wall combination, 430-11A. And again, the maximal height of our wall is only 4.1 feet, even though it's up to eight foot, or six foot that's allowed before you have a setback, but because the fence is on top of it, it's causing that relief. Again, we lighten that up by only putting a very light fence up for fall protection that would just be a vertical aluminum extruded fence that would be there, that would be four foot high. You can see right through it from a distance, it kind of blends into the natural landscape, so it's not a stockade fence that makes this thing look like eight foot high. It's still going to look like a four-foot wall, it's not going to look like an eight-foot wall. So we think relief is appropriate for those. The next items were about the signs, we just talked about that, under 430, 289A, about two signs versus one. And then 430, 287A.2B is the total area, the sign of 150 feet. We clearly want to have two signs on this building, because there's two important expressions of the corners of those buildings. That's important. The design intent is to have, you know, a real element that stands out at each of those corners there, and then a sign on top of that. This, this notion that it needs to be rooftop and counting towards rooftop, I understand that, but the size of the sign and even the expression of the sign was trying to make it a silhouette sign that's there. So it's not a sign that's a box that's plastered up against the building that someone could go do. It was to try to make something more architecturally interesting, to create a feature that's enhanced, not detract from this, and make something that looks more, I'll say, more of a high-end type of feature to the building, rather than try to get more square footage on the sign, because we want to make more advertising. We're really trying to integrate something that we're all happy with at the end of this day, not something to detract from that. And I think if it was just a rectangle sign that had letters either painted or stenciled on there, it's a different approach. But in this case, as you can see on this exhibit, we're really trying to make that light in the signage that's there. You can see through it, you can see the finstration that's behind it of the, the actual precast itself, and try to make it, again, architecturally interesting. So the notion is that we have two of those, the next notion is that we're slightly over on the square footage, we're 62% for each of those, but we're over by 150 versus 186. But it doesn't feel like a 93-foot sign because of the fact that it's light, you see right through it, okay? It's not trying to make one big box out of it that's a different color to display, something different. As far as this notion of a rooftop, I'm not sure what section that is...
430, 283B.
430...
283B.
283.0B.
Projecting signs which extend more than 18 inches from the wall of a building and all roof signs. So it basically fits both of those. It projects more than 18 inches, and it's a roof sign. That would cover it perfectly.
Okay.
That's actually...
And we're close to that 18 inches. It's not a two or three-foot projection, it's a, it's a foot to two-foot projection that's coming off of there. So it's not a big projection, just to give it some shadow lines to this. So with that, again, we're trying to make something that's elegant, something that's unique, something that's different. When you drive by there, it doesn't look like a warehouse that you would see along Route, the New Jersey thruway. And, and that's the, the intent of what we're trying to do here, is to make something that we're all proud of by the time it's done, and not something that's oversized for that. And I think by these graphics, you can kind of see that, it's not overwhelming to that. The last two, which are new tonight, that we didn't have originally... The last two, which are new tonight that we didn't have originally, was this notion of the loading berth size under 430-278V, and that is the total length of being two times the largest vehicle. Again, we're designing it for the WB76, 67, which could be 76 foot long. That would require 152 foot distance and we're 135. We're meeting industry standards. I think we're fairly comfortable in saying that we're meeting those industry standards and we're seeking relief for that. And then the width of the driveway, that would be under 430-275H. Again, 24 foot max. We're at 30 foot. We think that's appropriate. It may be less than that if we need some square footage for the sidewalk along the front that we squeeze that down in the center section, but we think it's appropriate for the design and the use of this building. As far as meeting the purposes of the zoning in order to get this relief, I looked at a couple of different sections of there. First of all, A, under the purposes to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use and development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, and welfare. C is to provide adequate light air and open space. E is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, municipalities, the county, and the state as a whole. G is to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreation, commercial, and industrial uses, and open space, both public and private, according to their respective environments requirements in order to meet all the needs. And then I is to promote a desirable visual environment through creative techniques and good civic design. I think the relief that we're asking for covers some of these topics that are in each of these purposes that meet the general intent of what the relief we're trying to ask for. It's minimal from the standpoint of what the relief is. It's specific to the site because of the uniqueness of the piece of property, of redeveloping the piece of property in order to do all the components that your ordinance requires. There's a couple of areas that we need to relieve on. As far as any negative criteria, no substantial detriment to the public good. The biggest element of this is the site itself. We're improving water quality and stormwater substantially over what's there today. I think it's a big improvement of what happens today. The relief as far as the parking space setback, it's still a good safe design. The good safe design for the walls and on top of the walls, it's a four foot wall. It's non-aggressive for that. We put a light fixture or a light fence up that's on top of that. We allow for the man-made steep slopes that we're going to not have a negative impact to the plan. And then lastly, it's not a substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan. The master plan in the new zoning ordinance contemplated this zone with the overlay eight. They want this used. You want to repurpose this. In order to do that, there are going to be minor reliefs in order to get this thing to work, to meet those general bigger objectives that you want to do of repurposing this site. The minor relief itself does not cause a negative impact to the neighbors, cause a negative impact to the vision that the board wanted for the relief that we're asking for. And we feel that it's an effective repurposing of the property and the relief that we're asking for meets into the criteria, meets into the intent of repurposing this for a warehouse use on this particular piece of property. So we look to that to grant relief of these items that we just talked about.
All right. Any members of the board have questions? Mr. DePiero?
Maybe I missed it, but are those signs illuminated?
Not internally. We'll just have a canopy light on it, external illumination.
External illumination?
Yeah, just really light, you know, type of thing that'll be probably a strip light that would just go up on it.
Mounted where?
In the canopy. My understanding is that we would mount it just in the front of it, right along that edge. So it would be like a shadow line coming up. We thought the internal illumination would probably be too bright, you know, not type of thing, and this would be a nice shadow line that would give up there. I think it would be an elegant solution there.
Okay. Thank you.
Are the members of the board have questions of this testimony at this time? Mr. M.
Question actually prior for our attorney and planner. Six Sylvan right next door. It does not currently count as a residential lot line, correct? I mean, we've approved an overlay. We've seen a concept, but we haven't seen an application for that yet.
We have a redevelopment area that splits it into two zones, one being a residential-
The next one. So is there a 150-foot buffer required here?
What was that specifically for? I think that-
For residential lot line?
I don't know where the residential lot line crosses, if it even crosses this property or if it intersects with the next property on Century.
Okay, so I guess, because we haven't discussed a variance for the 150-foot residential lot line buffer tonight.
I think that was specific to the zone that the other application is in.
It's on the zoning table, right here, listed as a requirement. All right, look, as long as we're not approving that variance and if it happens to be there and they have to come back and redesign their project, I'm okay with that.
Well, let's take a look now. Do you know how far the loading docked setback from that? I guess it would be western property line? Or no, eastern property line?
Yeah, give me a second. I got the plans here. Let me just look at that.
The built wall, the corner of the building, 160, 2.5, and then everything else is getting further away?
But the loading dock can't be in that buffer.
Oh, where's the loading dock?
Right behind the building.
I don't know if that would be 150.
Is it 100 feet of their property or of the building?
So I guess the question is, the 150 is for the SED zones. This is not.
Oh.
So is it at all? I don't believe it's-
So it doesn't apply to this zone?
It says overlay eight zone. Keep checking. So in the R O L zone, it does require 150 feet. This is the overlay zone that they've applied under.
But our zoning table shows that 150 feet for the O V L eight zone.
Buffer.
Look, if we're not, as long as the approval doesn't include it and it has to be dealt with later if it actually applies, I can move forward tonight.
Section 430-450, which is the bulk and dimensional standards for the overlay eight district, principal setback from residential lot lines is 150 feet, principal building setback.
So it's only principal building?
So there would, based on what I see, it would be within. And then it-
So it's within the 150 feet?
From residential lot lines.
Because on the other application that we've been dealing with, with warehouse, it has to be 150-foot vegetate, like grass-only buffer.
I guess the other question is time of application.
What was the, what was the section that you just read from?
430-450.
430-452 is also buffers.
Right. So 430-450E does have a minimum buffer width from residential lot lines of 150 feet.
And this doesn't satisfy that?
The other question, like I posed before, is the question of time of application. When was this application submitted and when was the redevelopment plan actually passed? And does that make a difference?
When did that neighboring lot become residential?
Right. When did this one come in?
I don't recall when this application was submitted.
Which would be before-
It would be before the redevelopment almost passed.
Yes, under time of the application rule, that buffer would not-
It wouldn't have applied because that is just a commercial lot right now. Right.
Yeah.
In other words, this application was submitted before the redevelopment plan was approved?
Right.
So then under time of the application rule-
I don't think that's, that would be the buffer would require, yeah. Which makes sense why you wouldn't, didn't even fill that in in the zoning table because it didn't apply at the time. If you would have brought this application today, then you would have had to comply.
Correct.
So I think we're good.
As long as we're good. Thank you. I'm sorry to have opened that and it works.
It was-
Yeah, it doesn't apply because of time of the application rule.
Because of time of application, okay.
Yeah. And I don't think, looking at where it is, I don't think it's really going to, I understand from residential lot, but knowing what the redevelopment plan is on that lot, I don't think this is going to impact.
I don't think this-
It's not going to impact it anyway.
So I think we're okay with that.
All right. Any other questions by members of the board to throw things into disarray? I'm sorry.
Just to note, I received-
I think we-
Any-
I mean, just to clarify, just in a short room. So even if we, it appears, I'm looking at this plan roughly, it appears that the lot line itself for that zone line, right about this corner here, just off the corner, but from this corner to this property or to the first developed area, it's greater than 150 foot.
Okay.
So that's all the detention basin, so can the detention basin be a buffer?
Well, you're also going to be talking to our town forest or about planting trees that'll help attenuate the sound.
Right.
The point is that, we don't, certainly we don't have a building, but it appears that we don't even have a parking lot within 150 foot of that corner of the property, which is the closest it possibly could be to that residential line for that back lawn. That's your apartment.
And just to note, the application was received on October 13th, 2023, which was two months before the redevelopment plan was passed.
Okay. So we can move forward. Any questions, comments on this testimony at this time? Anybody from the public have any questions of this testimony at this time?
So I was at the-
I'm sorry, you'll just have to use the microphone.
And just identify yourself again, please.
Camille Pesci, 11 Murray Court, Poughkeepsie. I was at the town council meeting when we reviewed overlay eight and we discussed all of this. And one of the concerns from one of the attendees from Murray Court, and Mayor, you were there and you told us to come to the planning board after that overlay eight was approved. I'm very familiar with overlay eight, and it did say 150 feet. And that was before October, all right, of, okay. So we were told that we should come here and this is the place that we could voice our opinion about what the 150-foot buffer would look like. And this nice gentleman and a couple of nice people down there supported us in saying we need trees, we need greenery, and this is what we're looking for. So thank you for bringing it up, about 150 foot, because that's what I thought you were referring to before. And that's another reason why I'm here representing Murray Court in Gloucester. Both streets are impacted by this. So if you could put it in your paperwork that 150 foot would consist of trees and shrubbery and greenery, I think that it would meet the intent of overlay. What?
Detention basin as well.
Yes, yes, because I could see it by grandbaby's window. We see all that. Thank you.
Any other members of the public have questions? I'm actually going to ask because we're about to ask if the public has any comments that they wish to make. Were those your comments? All right.
Thank you.
Very good. Do you have anything further?
I just want to thank the board for your time and attention and thank the board professionals for their time and attention. Thank Ms. Pesci from the public for coming out. Yeah, just very briefly, this is an office building that has been vacant for four years and is not going to be utilized again as an office building. And the town council, with the help of this board, transformed the zoning here in attempts to stimulate interest of a project of the likes that we believe that we've brought to you tonight, a project that will help provide stabilize and enhance your commercial ratable base in town, provide jobs and repurpose properties that need repurposing. And we've appreciated the opportunity to work with the board and the board professionals to look at ways in which we can make the project better from a community impact perspective in a way that will mitigate any impacts on the neighbors. And so as conditions of approval, we'd certainly be willing to agree to those things that were in the record, most notably the trees, which will act as sound attenuation, the banking of the parking spaces, if that is indeed the board's pleasure, the mountable curbs and the other things that are in the record, which we have agreed to. We feel that that will help enhance the project and make it better, not only for the applicant but also for the community, which is really important to us as well. So again, thank you to the board and we hope that you'll support this application.
All right. I'm just going to formally ask if there are any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition or in favor of this application at this time. We've already had some comments. Thank you very much. And so this closes the evidentiary portion of tonight's hearing. Any comments or somebody willing to move a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. DePiero?
Could we confirm the conditions first?
All right. What I have is that the applicant agreed to comply with the engineering review letter. Technical comments and recommendations will comply with, in the installation of a sidewalk as recommended, so long as it does not influence the applicant's Highland exemption. The applicant will comply with all their departmental reports, comments, to curve the pavement at the start of the turf driveway near the southern entrance, to bank the five parking spaces near that southern entrance and remove and replace the improved coverage with grass and landscaping, to comply with requirements regarding E V ADA parking spaces, and that the applicant will not have to return to the board if changes in the parking count is a result from those, meeting those requirements. The applicant will install fire lane signage and have curbing for the turf drive aisle and will install, or will agree to place a covenant in the operating manual regarding maintenance of the turf geo grid. Also agree to work with the planning, the board planner and engineer regarding the tree barrier and buffer and suggest preferred truck routes to drivers to avoid 202. I think that was everything.
That's what I have.
Okay.
Was that your motion, Mr. DePiero?
Yep. So, yeah.
Repeat it.
All right, I'm good. All right. A motion to approve application number 23, colon, 531, S K 3 Century Associates, LLC, 3 Century Drive, Block 11. S K three Century Associates, L L C, Three Century Drive, block two oh two, lot one point seven, zone R O L. Criminal and final major site plan with C variance for construction of a warehouse and related sign improvements as per the conditions noted down.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barbari. Mayor, Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Barbario.
Yes.
DeDich.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
McGrath.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Alatano.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
D N D L.
Yes.
Dismore.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. Did you get that at the combine yesterday? He was wrestling a bear. Come on my bicycle. Chairman, motion to adjourn. Mr. Chairman?
Second. So you've got a motion and a second adjournment about even the chairman asking for it?
Second, I'm calling your name.
All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed?